Board members, please take your seats. All right, good evening. The February 10th, 2022 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Island Creek Elementary School Choir under the direction of Sarah Laird.
To the flag of the United States of Amer-
Well done.
Thank you, Island Creek parents, for sharing your children with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on February 10th, 2022, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Ms. O'Mech. All those in favor? That motion passes. Agenda item 2.03, Announcements. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, the information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/boarddocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. A reminder, a mask that covers the nose and mouth must be worn at all times by everyone in attendance if you have a mask exemption or if you need a mask break. Please take advantage of the overflow room setup in the gymnasium. Agenda item 2.04, Resolution Honoring Black History Month. The Board will invite each recognition recipient and their supporters to come up for a photo with the Board after the reading of all recognitions. I call on Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the month of February is the time that we as a nation recognize Black History Month, the theme for 2022 is Black Health and Wellness, which acknowledges the legacy Black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine provide and reflects on the activities, rituals, and initiatives that Black communities have done to be well. And whereas the first Africans arrived on the shores of Virginia 400 years ago, bringing skills, knowledge, and traditions that have created a lasting culture impacting our communities today and recognizing the importance of teaching this rich impactful history to all students. And whereas African Americans have contributed to the founding and development of this nation and its culture despite the obstacles of slavery, discrimination, and institutionalized patterns of disparity, leading to the rise of the Civil Rights Movement and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And whereas African American families developed educational institutions across the nation to assist its people to achieve, including Howard University, that has now produced the first woman vice president, and whereas African Americans have made numerous contributions to social and scientific advancements such as those made by Dr. Charles Drew, who created the process to preserve blood plasma, allowing it to be stored and shipped for blood transfusions and immunology and infectious diseases, and expert Dr. Corbett, the scientist at the forefront of the development of the COVID-19 vaccine. And whereas those of African descent have lived in and contributed to the development and advancement of Fairfax County since its inception, as evidenced by the many contributions of private citizens, businesses, and African American organizations, as well as the establishment of various communities and organizations that have enhanced the rich and vibrant culture of Fairfax County and work to preserve African American culture and the rights of all its residents to create an inclusive, equitable county for all, now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County Public Schools hereby officially recognizes Black History Month in appreciation for the contributions of great Americans who have worked tirelessly and often without recognition for the advancement of both Virginia and the United States. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. Keys-Gamara, would you like to speak to your resolution?
I would. One second, thank you. Today, we acknowledge the solemn moment of Black History. This was a celebration, was a brainchild of Carter G. Woodson, an American historian, journalist, and author, who wanted to make sure that we in our educational process learned about the journey of African Americans as they came to this continent. In contrast, the United Daughters of the Confederacy was established in 1894. I should say, Carter G. Woodson started his movement in the early 1900s. But in the, for the Daughters of the Confederacy, in an effort to complete their mission, they raised funds to erect Confederate monuments and wrote and distributed textbooks, espousing a theory that slavery had little to do with the Civil War, even though the articles establishing the Confederacy mentioned slavery explicitly in outlining its purpose. I mention these two acts because they really point out where we are today. Despite Mr. Woodson's efforts to make sure that our students had an opportunity to learn about the contributions of Africans in the Americas, we still have difficulty talking about our history. Many have dreamed that being in the United States means that we have freedom of speech, that we can learn, we can talk about whatever it is we need to talk about. But the truth is, our democracy, in this democracy, the history of African Americans demonstrates both triumph and tragedy. Many have believed, but have not always achieved, the ability to be seen in their full humanity. Make no mistake, African Americans have achieved in virtually every effort that they have participated in. We can see that our vaccine was brought to us by an African American doctor. Mr. Drew helped us to be able to have blood transfusions. We have architects that have helped to design the Washington DC, our capital. Thank you. And on and on and on. There really isn't an area where African Americans have not achieved, even golf. So, when I think about how we talk about history, the rub really arises in our recognition of recognizing both our tragedy and our triumph, and our struggle to recognize the full humanity of everyone who lives within our borders. At times, we have tolerated dehumanization through slavery, through Jim Crow, through our watching in the video of Mr. Floyd losing his life. But make no mistake, it is the acknowledgement of our past that will allow us to grow beyond the tragedy of our past. So I'd like to mention just a couple of things that I think are factual. First of all, Black history is American history. The Black experience is indicative of so many. We have suffered, endured, and risen above so much tragedy, and we have excelled. And we join many people in this nation who have suffered as well. Koreans, African Americans, Native Americans, our Jewish people, our Jewish fellow citizens, so many, I cannot name them all, so please don't think I'm leaving anybody out. I understand that many have triumphed over difficulty. But where we really struggle is really recognizing the fullness of humanity of all within our borders. So the second thing I need to say is that public education is about educating the public. I shouldn't have to say that, but we in public education, as we teach our students, we must talk about the facts of science, the writings, and language arts, and history. So let me say this again. In public education, we teach history, all of it. Critical to education is critical thinking. In public education, we have to discuss the facts and we have to analyze them. It is contrary to the educational experience for anyone, elected or not, to try to hinder discussions that emanate from the critical thinking process. That effort is not education, but rather the attempt to regulate thought and a continuation of the effort to prevent full discussion of our collective history. We cannot temper or hinder the educational process with arbitrary standards designed to protect the comfort of some while disregarding the educational needs of many. This is not equality. That is not free speech, and it has no place in education. If we do not respect the process of education, we most assuredly allow the ugliest parts of our history to repeat itself. Now I'd like to speak to you just for a few moments on a personal note. When I ran for school board, I understood that there would be people who wouldn't agree with me. And I decided that in my heart and my mind, I would meet with those people and we would work it out and have civil discussion. But now in this current political atmosphere, there has been a sanctioning of something other than legitimate political discourse. In the last few days, I received a letter from a constituent who expressed his extreme desire to tar and feather me. Now I'm a bit of a history buff, and so I understand the history of that practice. It, in the history of the United States, has been used to intimidate African Americans and tell them where their place is, along with cross burnings and lynchings and a number of other horrific things. So I want to say this unequivocally: My place today is at this dais. I sit here today to say that this incident stresses the importance of not only Black History Month, but of the need to teach history, all of it. Cross burnings, Jim Crow laws, lynchings, the more than one million people who died at sea just so they could be forcibly ripped and divided from their families so that they could provide free labor, is part of that history. And it also demonstrates that the roots of why we're having difficulty sometimes recognizing the full humanity of everyone that's in this nation. The same issue has arisen for other people in this country, not just African Americans. Until we teach the full breadth of the American experience, there will be those who reach back and try the tactics of the past to try to gain advantage. The history of African Americans is a story of triumph and tragedy. It provides us lessons along the way that we must absorb and learn in order to achieve a more perfect union. As Maya Angelou said in one of my favorite poems detailing the Black experience, she said, "Despite it all, and still I rise." It is my hope that we join together today as a community in celebration of this history that is our history, and that we rise together as we learn and celebrate one another. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Quick reminder, we do have a mask policy in effect. We do ask everyone in the audience to keep your masks on, or please go to the overflow room if you need a break. Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. The third section of the resolution that Ms. Keys-Gamara read speaks to the contributions of African Americans to the founding and development of this nation and to its culture, despite the obstacles of slavery, discrimination, and institutionalized patterns of disparity, leading to the rise of the Civil Rights Movement and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. More recent example of this type of activism are reflected in the Black Lives Matter movement, the 1619 Project, and other initiatives that foster intentional reflections and investigation to weed out the root causes which perpetuate inequity, injustice, discrimination, and lack of access and opportunity. Currently, it appears that recognition of obstacles that continue to exist today due to the lasting effects of discrimination and institutionalized patterns of disparity cannot be discussed without a perceived intent of division. Recognizing differences and advantage, whether social, educational, or economic, should not imply racism or perceived to promote divisiveness, but rather should present a chance to address longstanding issues, make corrections, and hopefully increase understanding and expand opportunity where none exists. Should our children not be taught that Africans brought to the US did not enjoy slavery? Should they not be taught that Jim Crow, redlining, and other practices have created obstacles for Black families to build wealth and achieve the American dream? Should they not be made aware that our daily lives are impacted by the privileges either afforded or not afforded, given one's circumstances? As a person with advanced degrees and adequate resources, I maintain a much easier time navigating the various systems of our lives. But often, walking into certain spaces where my color and gender are the first observations being made by others, the result has placed me in a position for an uphill climb to be seen as a complete person, to be heard, and to be found worthy. Add an immigrant background to the mix, and the challenges are exponentially multiplied. Should our students not be made cognizant of this reality and be given the tools to combat inequity and pursue course corrections to allow everyone, regardless of circumstance, a shot at the American dream? Black history isn't only about the contributions of Black folk. It's also about the efforts to overcome the obstacles that impact Black folk. It's about naming the struggles to inform future practices and legislation in the hopes of developing a generation that is more tolerant, more inclusive than the current. In a letter written by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. from the Birmingham Jail in 1963, Dr. King writes, "We merely bring to the surface the hidden tension that is already alive. We bring it out into the open, where it can be seen and dealt with, like a boil that could never be cured as long as it is covered up, but must be opened with all its ugliness to the natural medicines of air and light. And justice must be exposed with all of the tension its exposure creates to the light of human conscience and to the air of national opinion before it can be cured." There is space for us to adhere to Dr. King's words. Thank you for joining us for this very important recognition and resolution. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Are there any other school board members wishing to speak? Ms. Maron?
Virginia's legacy as ground zero for enslaving kidnapped human beings puts responsibility on educators in this Commonwealth to portray the full breadth of history, the humanity of those impacted and involved. I know that the constituents that I represent overwhelmingly support the teaching of America's complex history involving racism against Black America through economic, political, and social explorations and critical thinking. I began hav- I began advocating for anti-racist instruction about American history that truthfully presents the role of Black Americans in history and society way before I was elected. And I'm proud that my child received a more accurate and full account of American history when in fourth grade two years ago. And I'm eager for my now-third grader to participate in fourth grade Virginia Studies next year because he will get a better experience due to the hard work we've done in curriculum and training and building a more caring culture for our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I did want to elevate something that Ms. Kizgimara had shared because it's something that I have not seen us do in my time on the board. And it has to do with elevating Carter G. Woodson. As she noted, he is not only a native Virginian, he was born in 1875 to formerly enslaved parents. He was the second African-American to earn a PhD at Harvard, only preceded by W. Dubois. But what's most important is that he is known throughout our nation as the father of Black history. And when we think about a man who in 1912 graduates from Harvard, then goes on within three years to create the African-American, the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, later to be renamed the Association of Study of African-American Life and History, and its scholarly journey, journal that is now known as the Journal of African-American History, one year later after that. It is his leadership that he also then brought the Negro History Week, now known as the Black History Month. I just felt that it was important for our community to understand that not only can we be extremely proud of this Virginian, but as Ms. Maron noted, under the circumstances of the history of our Commonwealth and to think that over 100 years ago, this gentleman was blazing the trail, not simply to make the world better for African-Americans in this country, but for all Americans. And finally, I just want to spotlight, as a family that's affiliated with the University of Virginia, I'm so proud of the fact that in 1981, that they created the Carter G. Woodson Institute for African-American and African-American and African Studies in honor of him. And this program is not only something for undergraduates to pursue African-American history, but also at the graduate level, post-doctorate level. And their research institute is considered one of the greatest resources that people can continue to learn and understand and carry on the history of African-Americans. So, Ms. Kizgimara, thank you so much for bringing him up this evening. I can't think of a better Virginian that we celebrate here this evening.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Before I provide remarks, I want to thank my colleagues. Ms. Kizgimara, Dr. Anderson, sharing your lived experience is so important for all of us at this dais to understand. And the most recent and egregious communication to Ms. Kizgimara is unacceptable. We have to find a way in this country and in this Commonwealth and in this county to have respectful discourse without having personal attacks made against any member and certainly not one that is steeped in the racist undertones that you received. And I apologize on behalf of the people of Fairfax County that you received such a note. So, I normally do not add comments to the Black History Month resolution. However, this year, in light of the tone and tenor of the discourse regarding how we teach history, I think it is imperative for all of us to speak about this issue. You all know that I am a product of Fairfax County Public Schools and that the district that I represent. The best part of being from Mount Vernon is because it is steeped in history, representing the best of the country's beginning and the worst with its history of slavery. We recognize and lifted up this dichotomy last year when the Ona Judge marker in front of the Mount Vernon estate was unveiled last spring. Ona Judge's story is one that must be told to understand better the complexities of our founding fathers and the importance of learning from our history. Ona's story was only recognized because of the important work of a Fairfax County employee, Mora Keeney, a school-based technologist who is currently at Island Creek Elementary School. Mora started a group called History Hunters Club, and that club decided to do research on the real history of the state of Virginia and then present their results to the state of Virginia so that it could be recognized in a series of, I believe, six markers across the Commonwealth. So, that's a great example about the power of education for our students. And these were students who normally would not have dug deep into the his, into Black history. So, they, they learned from it and they are stronger because of the history that they learned from. It did not diminish their understanding of the importance and the respect they had for the first president, but it recognized the frailties of that first president as well. As an elementary school student, many of you have heard the story before, but I was an elementary school student in the 1960s, and I had the pleasure of going to a school that was actually built as the very first elementary school opened in Fairfax County as a desegregated school. That school was named Quander Road Elementary. It was named after a very prominent family that still lives in the community. My classmates were descendants from the slaves whom were able to, and they were able to tell their family's history and their stories. Black educators in the building were amongst the best in the school. I say all this because learning that history and understanding our country's history, the good, the bad, and the ugly, does not mean that we diminish the positive, it just means that we tell the full story. And that hearing about that history from people who have those lived experiences, from families that have deeper roots in the United States than I ever will, because my family didn't come until the late 1800s. It's that learning from that that empowers our children to understand and to think critically and to want to dig deeper. And so, I just encourage that we remember that as we approach the importance of not only strengthening our curriculum, but also broadening it to ensure every child benefits from that knowledge.
Thank you. Seeing no other school board members wishing to speak, I will go ahead and call for that vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item two, after all, yeah, photos at the end. Agenda item 2.05, Resolution Honoring Public Schools Week. I call on Ms. Omech.
Whereas the National School Boards Association celebrates public schools during Public Schools Week, February 21st to 25th, 2022, and whereas public education is the foundational commitment that society makes to ensure that a pathway is available for every child to succeed in life, no matter their background, capabilities, or family circumstances, and whereas public schools educate nine of every 10 students and indeed educate the majority of school-aged children in Fairfax County, and whereas this year, the theme is creating safe, equitable, and engaging public schools, which reflects Fairfax County Public Schools' commitment to our students, families, and staff, and whereas public schools may look different this year to reflect the evolution of learning in a complex world, but still retain the central commitment to students' safety, academic learning, and personal growth, and whereas during Public Schools Week, FCPS honors a roughly 178,000 students with, and over 24,800 dedicated employees working in 198 schools and centers, and now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County Public School Board joins other supporters and advocates in celebrating Public Schools Week. May all children thrive in public schools. I so move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Maron. Ms. Omech, would you like to offer some comments?
I would. Thank you, Ms. Pikarski. Obviously, it's timely that this be right after African-American History Month, and I did want to reserve my remarks on that because I thought the magnitude and importance and gravity of what Ms. Kizgimara and Dr. Anderson shared should speak the loudest in tonight's conversation. So, I'll just say amen to that and appreciate my gratitude, and express my gratitude to you. Last year and in years past, this recognition to honor public schools was mostly a formality. It seems to land quite differently today, though. To the detriment of every single one of us, our public schools have been under attack. Some have genuine and valid pains and grievances they're voicing. Many, though, have sought to sow division deliberately and foment untruths. I call upon us to learn from our past, as we always should, to stand united against division and for our public schools. Let us not forget the day when we didn't and the millions of dollars it continues to cost our kids for us to clean it up. That was the same day when we saw assimilation schools in the 1800s that quashed Native children and sought to kill the Indian and save the man. Or when Japanese, Italian, and German members of our community were relocated to attend barracks and barbed-wire schools and concentration camps. Or, of course, when we saw segregated schools into the 1950s that thought colored children and white children ought not learn together. Today is a day when we recognize that zip codes must not determine opportunity. Today, we articulate that unfairness exists and own that action is required in the long way to go. Let us stand with our public schools and put our worst days behind us. A lot of us are frustrated. We all come at education with our various worldviews. I have plenty of frustrations myself, even at my colleagues and our system at times. But we sure as anything recognize that this is something worth fighting for, that this system has so much more to offer than we can afford to lose, that the communities we have built and the dreams we are able to make true on a daily basis in our classrooms, the result of thousands of struggles, of dollars, of hours of mental wellness expended here, expended to build something, expended to make something beautiful in our classrooms. And so, this week, we celebrate public schools. We celebrate the great equalizer, the home of opportunity, the incubator for potential. We celebrate public schools and recommit every day when it's hope and when it's anger that drives us, to channel it, to build better, to move forward, to build a future that we hope to see our kids inherit. So, today, with my colleagues, we stand strong, firm, and unapologetic in support of our public schools.
Ms. Maron?
So, in my nearly 43 trips around the sun, I've spent 36 of those years either attending public school or working for public education. There's nowhere else I'd rather be on the most front and, front and local lines of reinforcing public education's value than at this time and in this place. This week was one full of much advocacy on behalf of our public schools to our representatives in the Virginia General Assembly. And at moments when I felt a bit fatigued, I needed to only look at the wave of communications coming to me from parents and constituents who were right there, fighting for their public schools, for the education all of our children deserve. And none of us are going to give up on that promise to bring education into our community because that's what makes a strong community.
Ms. Corbett Sanders? Dr. Anderson?
Yes, very briefly. Similarly to Ms. Maron, I spent my entire career in public schools as a teacher, as a principal, so it's hard for me to not say something here. And so, thank you, Ms. Omech, for your really powerful words because those were some of my comments. Public schools are the great equalizer. We have to protect them. It is the only option for many in our community, and we have to ensure that we're being good stewards of those schools. Despite of policy decisions in which we don't have full agreement, we must ensure that public schools continue in a manner that is well-funded because they do impact all of our students, all of our children. So, thank you for bringing this forward, Ms. Omech, and thank you for your very eloquent words on this. Thank you.
Ms. Darnakofax?
I, too, I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward. As Dr. Anderson said, public education is the great equalizer amongst our, in our community. And at least you think, we all take it for granted here. I think we do. But last night, my son, who is a reporter in South Carolina, he did a story on a family that just came back, that just immigrated here from Afghanistan. They worked for the federal government, our federal government in Afghanistan. And she's pregnant with twins, the mom, and she said something that just seriously made me cry when I was watching it. She's pregnant with twin girls, and she said, "I wouldn't have wanted these girls if I had to stay in my country." And here in the U.S., she is so happy now that she is able to bring her children into this world where education is free, where women can be educated, where as, as Ms. Kizgimara, you spoke so eloquently on Black history, where Black women, women of every color, I mean, it was not that long ago where women, Black women, could not be educated in the same way as, as people, as other, others. So, I just, what we take for granted here is not something that we can take for granted because now, in 2021, other parts of the world don't have public education like we do. And so, it's extremely important that we appreciate it, that we protect it, and that we don't take public monies that will serve the entire population to serve private interest. So, I think that's extremely important and to understand what other people see and feel around the world, and they come to our country and they expect this. It's extremely important that we uphold this and we uphold the ideals that, of education that is free and is a great equalizer for all races, sexes, genders. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Seizmar Heiser?
First, thank you to Ms. Omech and Ms. Maron for bringing this forward. I will not repeat the words of my colleagues. I agree with, with what all of you have said about education as a great equalizer. I just, I wanted to add to that, that in our system of government, as someone who was a lawyer, taught constitutional law to undergraduate students at George Mason, you see firsthand the importance of a strong education for everybody in maintaining our system of government, in maintaining our democracy, in maintaining the rule of law, which is what sets us so apart and makes us so unique. And it's, it's predicated, it's, it's necessary to have informed, educated citizens, citizens who are capable of reasoned, logical, fact-based discussions with each other so our citizens can vote, so our citizens can be informed. That is how democracy survives. We are a government by the people. Public education educates the people. That is how we're strong. So, public educate, without public education, we don't have democracy. It's that simple. So, I am honored to be able to celebrate this today. I am honored to be able to celebrate public education. And rest assured, if we want our system of government, if we want our democracy, if we want our freedoms, we need strong public education.
Thank you, Ms. Seizmar Heiser. A free public education has the ability to change a child's life when we send our children into our public schools to learn from each other, to be together, to hear other perspectives, other lived experiences, and learn that while we can be different, we are able to have educated discourse and still learn how to live together, how to think together. And I want to thank my school board members, colleagues, and everyone in this system who fights for strong public schools every single day of the year, every single minute of every day, and we will continue to do so. With that, I would like to call for the vote. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 2.06, PTA 125th Anniversary Resolution. Agenda item 2.06, PTA 125th Anniversary Resolution. I'll call on Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Whereas for 125 years, National Parent Teacher Association, the PTA, has worked toward bettering the lives of every student. Founded by Alice McClellan Burney and Phoebe Apperson Hurst, when women did not have the right to vote, the National Congress of Mothers was established as a national organization focused on addressing the education, health, and safety needs of children. On February 17, 1897, over 2,000 people, mostly mothers, but also fathers, teachers, laborers, and legislators, attended the first convocation of the National Congress of Mothers in Washington, D.C. Whereas in 1926, Selena Sloan Butler formed the National Congress of Colored Parents and Teachers to advocate for children, especially African-American children in segregated communities. Whereas in June 1970, the two national organizations merged to form the National Parent Teachers Association. Whereas today's PTA is the largest child advocacy organization in the nation, made up of millions of families, students, teachers, administrators, and business and community leaders, devoted to the educational success of children, provides parent voice on important issues facing children and youth. Whereas through advocacy, family and community education, and countless hours of volunteering in our classrooms, libraries, and in after-school programs, PTA is a dedicated partner with teachers to improve educational outcomes for all students. Whereas their advocacy has resulted in the creation of kindergarten classes, student health and safety programs, healthy breakfast and lunch programs, and robust programs for the arts. And whereas the Fairfax County PTA has been a leader in bringing attention to the needs of students with disabilities with the formation of the Special Education Parent Teachers Association, and advocates for improvements in our curriculum to address concerns about literacy and adverse childhood experiences. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes and celebrates the 125th anniversary of the National Parent Teachers Association and the important partnerships between parents and schools in advancing the academic, social, and emotional needs of all students. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Seizmore-Hyzer. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair. I brought this resolution to the board because of the important partnership that parents and educators have in Fairfax County. We have heard from some parents that they do not believe parents are listened to in our public schools. This resolution is important because of the historic significance of this organization that is 125 years old, but it also recognizes the very importance of parent voice in our decision-making. It is timely that this resolution celebrates the parent voice on the same night that we recognize both Public Schools Week and Black History Month. Virginia was the very first state in the country that embedded in its constitution the right to a free public education for all, and that was the constitution that was enacted as part of Reconstruction. A little, in 1870, a little over a quarter of century later, the PTA was formed. And here in Fairfax County, our parent teachers associations and our PTOs are an important voice at the table. Parents participate in the school improvement plan process, are active in our classrooms as room parents, volunteers at science fairs in classrooms, mentoring and also fundraising, as well as serving in very important advisory committees to this board. PTA has brought concerns to the school system about sleep, grading, curriculum, and more. Locally, I've had the pleasure of serving on the PTA at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We were instrumental in building outdoor learning spaces, assisting in our libraries, classrooms, and book fairs, and participating in principal selection panels. Our special education PTA is recognized nationally for the work that they have done to raise up the voice of our special education parents. Our parent organizations have been incredibly creative in engaging parents and families during the COVID shutdown with virtual bingo nights, ice cream socials, special events on key topics impacting parents and students, and much more. Returning to in-person learning, they have volunteered to help in our schools, cafeterias, and playgrounds. It is with great joy that I am able to recognize the important partnerships of the schools and parents tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Seizmore-Hyzer?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, for bringing this forward. I'm honored to second this motion. I've often talked about the importance for students to feel a sense of belonging and connection to their school community, and that is something I feel very strongly about. And the studies do show that students who feel that strong connection, that strong sense of belonging, do better academically and have better social and emotional outcomes. And the PTAs are seminal to creating that atmosphere, creating those opportunities for students to connect and belong and have fun in their schools, right? Through after-school classes, through activities, through getting buses for field trips, it's the PTAs that bring that spark to our schools. It's also a great place for families to be able to engage with their schools, with their school leadership, with their teachers, and strong family engagement is also shown to lead to better academic and social outcomes. The PTAs provide such great opportunities for parents to be heard, to be involved, and have been instrumental in making our schools the strong places that they are. During the 2020 school year, I held five virtual roundtables with PTA leaders, one in each region. I was able to hear their questions and answer their questions, but what was actually amazing was listening to these great leaders share with each other the wonderful things they were doing to make their school community stronger and share ideas and brainstorm with each other. And it was wonderful to hear the broad perspective and hear the creative ways they found to keep our community strong through outdoor movies, snow day pictures, virtual science nights, and more. And in addition to being a place for families to be heard and for students to find opportunities to belong, their advocacy has helped improve schools here at FCPS, around the state and around the country, including, I have to give a little shout-out to the special ed PTA, which I used to be on the board for, speaking for students with disabilities whose voice often had not been heard. So our schools are so much better off because of our PTA, so I'm honored to bring this. Thank you to our PTAs.
Ms. Maron?
Yeah, I just want to say quickly, I couldn't wait to join the PTA when my kid got to elementary school. I remember my mom doing that back in the day. I just want to put in a plug, though, for folks to understand the difference between PTA and other parent organizations. You know, the PTA is a national organization that has, you know, this history, but also a lot of supports that really help its three goals of, you know, some fundraising, some supplement, you know, community engagement, and I'm totally blank on the last one, but there are three specific things that they do. And I know that some of our schools, some schools I represent, they have a parent-teacher organization or a parent-teacher-student organization, and that is a different thing. So I just want folks to understand that there is a difference in that structure and the kinds of support that is available, and to just be educated about what the benefits and drawbacks are of each model and what works for your own school community. Thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
Too many names that rhyme. I just wanted to make a couple of remarks on all of the resolutions that were just passed. I was looking through some Martin Luther King quotes, and I came upon this one. "An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." And I really feel like all of the resolutions that we have tonight, Black History Month, public schools, and our resolution around our PTA, PTAs and all the work that they do, really represents those that have risen above these individualistic concerns and looking at the broader concerns of all humanity. So just a couple of other remarks that I wanted to make around that. I'm really happy that my mother, many years ago, had me out marching for civil rights in the '60s, and instilled in me the basics of inclusivity, like Karen Kies-Gumara, and I appreciated her comment so earlier, that she said earlier, "I'm here working for all of our students and, you know, trying to enhance the learning for all of our, for every single one of our students." And I do want to thank particularly our NAACP has been doing some incredible work lately to promote literacy and better education for all of our students here in Fairfax County. They've done some great work with that. I'm a product of public schools and public universities, and I have spent most of my career in public education. My husband laughs that he had no idea that his life would be tied to a school schedule most of the time, even after our two boys finished going all the way through Fairfax County public schools. And with all my work in public education, I've mentioned this so many times in my comments, I am constantly amazed at the incredible achievements of our students and the incredible things our students are doing for their community with what they have learned in our public schools, and I want to see that continue. I've also been a PTA leader and know the power of parent input, you know, through our PTAs, our PTSAs, and our PTOs. And I cannot thank, I have a Terrenceville PTA, PTO, PTSA leaders group, and I cannot thank them enough for the support they've given each other over the last couple of years through the difficult times that we've had with the pandemic, but just in general, and the incredible work that they have done for their communities. So I am so excited to have this combination of resolutions tonight. They all fit together so nicely. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you so much. I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Seizmore-Hyzer bringing this resolution. I was very fortunate to get to be a PTA president for two years at Cherry Run Elementary School, the tiny but the mighty. And it was great training for this gig. I definitely learned a lot. But, you know, when we talk about all of the things over this last couple of years, all of the people for whom the pandemic has been, made things much more difficult. I'm not sure we've done enough to talk about how hard your job has been as PTA presidents, as PTA board members. You know, you have had to totally reimagine what your jobs look like, scrap together what is a virtual bingo night and virtual talent show, and how do you connect a community and a school from six feet apart? And the limitations on your activities, you know, I used to think that I had some amount of street cred when I talked to the PTA and PTO folks, and I can't even imagine doing this job in the last two years. So thank you, because so many times in this pandemic, our PTAs and PTOs were the glue that kept our communities and our schools connected. And what you have done, it's always so important, but in these last two years in particular, you have been a lifeline, I think, for many of us in the community, and your service is so appreciated. So thank you for what you do for all of us, for our kids, for our staff, and for us parents. We appreciate you more than we can say. Thank you.
Ms. Darnakofax?
Happy to follow Ms. Cohen. She said a lot, what I would like to say. I just want to thank all the PTA volunteers out there. You provide the sprinkles for our ice cream cones, and you provide the syrup on our snow cones and the bouncy houses. And as you said, it has changed a lot in the last two years. But I do want to thank you for sticking in there, still providing that joy to our students, working not just for your child, but for every child in that school, and making sure the staff knows you're appreciated, they're appreciated through all of the things that you do as well. I have had the privilege of serving as a PTA president, vice president, and I love doing the cultural arts for two different elementary schools. So it's where I met lifelong friends, and I know you do it. I see Ms. Debbie Kilpatrick, you have been doing this for years, and we thank you. You've gone to the state leadership, local leadership. Thank you for all that you do, the team that you put together to continue serving students beyond even your doors, beyond when your children have graduated. So for all of those who continue to do this, you do it as a labor of love, and we thank you so much because you really are a partner that we need and that we care about and that we just love. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other school board members, I'll just quickly, there's no way I could let a PTA resolution go by without me speaking. Proud PTA member for decades, PTA president for many, many years, then served on the district PTA, and throughout my many years of involvement. It is a place where I have met some of the most dedicated, selfless people who give so much of their time back to our students, back to our public schools, and get absolutely not a thing in return, except, can you please come and volunteer some more? And I am so grateful to all of our parents who give so much of themselves. This community has strong support from our parents for all of our schools, and we are extremely grateful to all of you, particularly these past couple of years, which have been so incredibly difficult. And I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. And with that, if we can go ahead and take the vote, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Hey!
I would like to invite Nathan Monell, the National PTA Executive Director, Hamid Munir, the Vice President of Training for the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, Debbie Kilpatrick, Northern Virginia District PTA Assistant Director, as well as parents, students, and staff here tonight in support of the PTA, to please join the board at the dais for a photograph. We are going to be doing photographs for all of the resolutions tonight, so please stick around. We want everybody to participate. If you are here this evening in support of the Black History Month resolution, we ask that you please join the board at the dais for a photo.
at the dais for a photo. Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as a capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity and appropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and the letter of the school division's non-discrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the school board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. In-person speakers should wear a mask when addressing the board. As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. We are grateful for those who have come today to speak to us, and we thank all of you for your cooperation. Our first speaker is Ishi Vapula.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Ishi Vapula. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of Girl Scout Troop 2090. The issue that my troop is trying to address today is the consistent lack of menstrual products available in school restrooms throughout Fairfax County. It is our understanding that under Senate Bill 232, Virginia middle and high schools are required to supply menstrual products in school bathrooms at all times and at no cost to students in the local school division. Yet, this is not the case of our school and many others through FCPS. We created a survey inviting middle and high school students across FCPS to determine if the unavailability of menstrual products we were experiencing at our schools was a common issue district-wide. Our results reflect that of the 140 FCPS students who participated in the survey, a shocking 60% said that menstrual products were never available in their school bathrooms. Another 35% said that they were sometimes available. Collectively, that is 95%. When asked how much learning time it would take away from their day to obtain menstrual supplies from the nurse's office, 80% of the students responded with 10 minutes or more. Personal experiences shared with us in the survey reflect the struggles students endure with the unavailability of menstrual products in restrooms. One student shared that she once checked in multiple different bathrooms for a pad and eventually had to go to the nurse to obtain one, missing class time, which she was then punished for. Another student said that she is only able to get feminine hygiene products at our academy school. Ensuring that Senate Bill 232 is properly implemented in schools can benefit students with decreasing amounts of clinic trips and reduce anxiety and stress in the school environment. We look forward to finding a resolution to this problem so that students in Fairfax County can be more comfortable while in school. Thank you all for your time, and we hope that this brings a positive change to our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dylan Jiren. Dylan Jiren. Our next speaker is Anna Miller. Our next speaker is Angela Boyer. Our next speaker is Sharon Johnson.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm speaking tonight as a former public school teacher, and I have a daughter who graduated from Fairfax County Public Schools as well. And I want to start by thanking all the teachers and the school board of Fairfax County. I want to extend to all of you my gratitude, my appreciation and support for the amazing work that you've all done for our students, especially in the face of the pandemic. And I understand it may feel like you all are not getting a lot of support, that there are a lot of us out here who do appreciate you and support you. So please know that. I also wanted to share my thoughts about a topic that's been going on for a long time, and it has to do with misinformation that has been spread about the teaching of critical race theory in the public schools and the move to stifle the presentation or allowing information and literature about alternative lifestyles, which are important to many of our Fairfax County LGBTQ student population. I truly believe, as a former educator and a parent and a citizen for many years in Fairfax County, I believe our students want the truth. Our students deserve the truth, and our students are perfectly capable of hearing the truth and discerning what they will, and they will not believe. We do our students a disservice by not giving them enough credit to learn the complete picture about their culture, the culture of their fellow students and citizens of all cultures in which they live. The history of this country is rich, diverse, multicultural, and multi-dimensional. There is no one size fits all in America. There is much good to celebrate, and there's much to learn from our nation's history to keep us from repeating past mistakes. Though hiding or whitewashing the truth only weakens us, the truth, the whole truth, makes us stronger. Those who seek to deny-
Angela Boyer.
Okay. Thank you for having me back again to speak. My topic is masks, and I wanted just to illustrate by way of my prop that this mask that I'm wearing is about as beneficial as this. And it probably would be legal to walk into the building with this on. These masks do nothing, and we really all know that they do nothing, and we realized this for a long time. But a lot of us have a confirmational bias, which doesn't want us to admit that what we've been led to believe in doing and are continuing to doing is really of any value at all. And I think you're aware that there are a lot of studies that will show you that, in fact, it is not healthy for us to wear masks for any prolonged period of time, particularly to children, which I also think is probably known in the back of the minds of many people here tonight. So I am offering you some brochures made by Citizens for Free Speech, where they will illustrate to you what happens with a lack of oxygen, that will, that will explain to you what happens when, if you are sick and you continue to wear these things, that you trap the bacteria in your lungs. So if anybody's interested in seeing these, you're welcome to have them up front. I also wanted to illustrate very quickly that there are seven different types of bacteria also located in these masks. Once again, your bias is not going to want you to admit that what they've led us to do is not really beneficial at all. But I think if you read some of this literature, you might change your mind. As far as everything else goes, I was here when Luther Jackson became integrated. And I can speak to everything that's wonderful that's happened in this country and in this county. But we're not living in that old world of 200 years ago. We're well beyond that, and we don't really want to go back to it. So I suggest that we not be a victim with the masks, and we look forward, and we walk together, and make a beautiful country for everybody, and don't be dividing on things that happened so long ago that they're a nightmare that we really need to forget. So thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Holly Hazard.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. I am for public education, and I'm not alone. Tonight, a group of educators, parents, and community activists will launch "For Public Education", a grassroots group championing public schools. We demand that our communities reinstate truthful and civil conversations about education and that the bullying and the performance advocacy designed for an audience far away from this room stops. Public schools are the cornerstone of a healthy democracy. As the rabble-rousers on masking books and bathrooms move on to the next intoxicating fault line, they leave in their wake a damaged community. Their kids aren't better off, their schools aren't stronger, and however, damage is done, point one. The strategy mimics that of the radical right in the 1970s when they discovered the power of the abortion issue. They went to our churches to foment hatred and intolerance to pull, to advance their political goals. Now, they have their sights set on our public schools with the same end in mind, to scare us and divide us, and then come in as saviors to dismantle our schools and our dreams of equity, tolerance, and a loving, level playing field. We are afraid, so afraid that we all stopped what we were doing to come together and fight for public education. The COVID conflicts of today are a perfect example of the challenge. One parent in our group with an immune-compromised child was almost moved to tears yesterday by the overreach of the Virginia Senate. Others, sitting here with healthy kids, have had enough, and they believe that masks can't protect their kids and don't believe that that mask can protect others. So here you sit. There is no right answer, no perfect time, no compromise that will satisfy all the stakeholders. We should at least acknowledge and accept this and trust you, the people we elected, to do your best. The vast majority respect and revere our public education system. We aren't loud, we aren't angry. We now raise our hands to say, we are here, we are strong, we champion, champion an exceptional education, and we are for public education.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Turk Hoffman. Sarah Turk Hoffman. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Burke.
Happy Black History Month from these hallowed halls rich in black, with black history, a school that was built for, for black students during segregation. Learning our history, all of it, not just the pleasant parts, is important because those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat the mistakes. But I see parallels between the ugly history of segregation and the politics today. Let me explain. Once it was against the law to teach even free black people to read and write. Later, Virginia passed laws against black and white kids going to the same school. Back then, the out-loud excuse was the integration would increase racial prejudice. Around the time this school was opened, the Virginia Legislature passed a law to forbid integration. This was followed by a long and painful decade of forced integration in Virginia, during which Fairfax paid the tuition for white students to go to private schools, and some schools in Virginia closed rather than integrate. Do you see the parallels between then and now? The outrage, illogical claims, and attempts to use legislation to limit equity? The plans to siphon resources from public schools to provide other schools not answerable to the school board? The provisions of vouchers and school choice? Just like that out-loud excuse that was used during segregation, that integration would increase racial prejudice? Today, the out-loud excuse is that black history is divisive. And there are bills before the legislature to outlaw the teaching of our complete history. Some have lumped everything involving race into one category that they call critical race theory. Although used incorrectly, that term has become a boogeyman to those who are easily outraged and fearful. But ignoring our painful history will not undo past wrongs. Instead, if we are to avoid past mistakes, we must learn from our history.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Carter. Our next speaker is Chris Carter. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Chris Carter, and I am a parent of a high school student in Fairfax County. I am opposed to the social-emotional learning screenings being conducted by Fairfax County, the one in the fall and the one in the coming spring. I am opposed for many reasons, but the issue that I am bringing before the board today is that even though I have opted out of the screener, my student's name, student ID, school, and grade level are still being given to the Panorama Education, the private company that is conducting the survey. According to the Fairfax County website, it states, for students who are opted out of the screener, the only data we share with Panorama Education is the student's name, ID, school, and grade level. What else is there to share? The website goes on to say, this allows Panorama to confirm that all students who are opted out of the screener are removed from their distribution list and do not receive a link to the screener. I believe Fairfax County should delete all opted-out students' names and personal information before a distribution list is sent to Panorama to protect the identities of all students who have opted out of the screener. I try to protect my child from identity theft. His school ID is like a social security number. It's linked to his school grades, home address, phone number, and other personal data that should not be shared outside of Fairfax County Public Schools. I think parents should have to give permission before a student's ID can be shared outside of the school for any reason. Let's protect our students' personal information. Let's change the procedures and not-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Devery.
Good evening, thanks very much. I am Bob Devery from the Braddock District. I don't believe any of the board members know me or my ancestors. I make the comment because many on the board and in the community can decide to act as they do when teachers came up with this plan out at Oakton about the white privilege bingo card that did not go through because enough parents found out and said something about it. For a group that insists on not using color, I find that it's not true. They go judge on color, not just for white males, but also for many of the black Americans and people of color who don't vote Democrat and have the nerve to go up against CRT and BLM. They are demonized, and they also, even Condoleezza Rice was called a white supremacist. How do you do that? The majority of white folk do not get up in the morning and try to figure out how to oppress people regardless of what you may think. I was not taught to judge on color, but many people want us to judge on color now. I am a white supremacist. Some of you who believe I'm a white male and that CRT, in my opinion, is just a horrible, dividing mistake. No one, according to Martin Luther King, and us, should be made to feel ashamed of their skin color, and that includes white folk. It wasn't right in the past, but today it's okay to go ahead and condemn a whole group of people. My dad was combat wounded, World War II, as many of my family. I was Air Force. I grew up in an apartment with five kids, five of us, in New York, three of us in the bedroom. My sister, we would split time on a beach chair. That's not white privilege. None of the kids were privileged. We all succeeded, though. I don't advocate racism. It stinks. But CRT makes everyone look at race instead of the person. Individuals are called oppressors or victims, and my grandkids now are being taught that I'm-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Monica Carpio. Monica Carpio. Our next speaker is Leslie Kotecki. Our next speaker is Suparna Dutta.
Good evening. Fairfax parents will remember the pandemic years for the tyranny and ignorance of the Fairfax School Board and the Superintendent. When schools around the world remained open and didn't have mask mandates, FCP has dismissed signs and put in mask mandates. When Governor Youngkin signed an executive order protecting the constitutional rights of students and their parents to choose whether to wear masks in school, you decided to resist, hiding behind phrases like "health" and "safety." To you, politics is more important than the mental health of children. Suspending students for not wearing masks is cruel and callous, and it goes on your record. Thankfully, a bipartisan bill, SB 739, to unmask our kids, is making its way quickly and could be enacted very soon. You see the writing on the wall, and that's why you emailed, perhaps reluctantly, a potential rollback plan this morning. Ratcha put it aptly in 2020. She called this a "super progressive board." As FCP is racist to the bottom in education, you squander our tax money. Public education is big business. You plan to spend $200,000 for a Big Brother surveillance of constitutionally protected speech on social media, according to a new proposal made public. Spending parents' money to spy on parents? You call it social media, a listening service that tuggers the FCP's brand. You care about a brand, not kids. You contracted with Panorama Education to data-mine our kids with $2.4 million for a five-year social and emotional screening. As Ratcha urged you in an email to do more to control the narrative, you spent almost $100,000 in six months on a crisis management firm called Yes ampersand to help you with controversies like the TJ admission scandal back in 2020. The truth is that parents need a choice of-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Schaefer.
For months, parents have spoken to the harms inflicted on children by this board's COVID policies. I'm raising my kids to take ownership of their decisions. You are the elected board responsible for policy, not the public health advisors wrongly steering you. You have to own the decisions. This board shut down schools in spring of 2020, ceased in classroom instruction the following year. Virtual learning was a disaster every parent witnessed, very predictable. You returned students to the classroom this year, but your policies continue to harm. How many student athletes were coerced to take an experimental vaccine last fall? Their choice was to take an experimental vaccine or quit. Your policy forced a wedge between patient and doctor, a sacred relationship. Where there is risk, which every vaccine incurs, there must be choice. I credit you for finally dropping the vaccine mandates for spring sports, a quiet confession of being wrong last fall, but still you impose illogical and discriminatory isolation policies for unvaxxed athletes. Here's how the spring sports policy should have read. "All students can compete whether vaxxed or unvaxxed. If you have a COVID-like symptom, isolate. The end." For masking, there are no long-term studies of masking children because no parent would volunteer their child up for this abusive experiment. This board's forced masking policy involuntarily signed up 178,000 children for the study, and the results are coming in. Prolonged masking in children results in measurable drops in IQ and speech delays, among other harms. Today, you release your rollback strategy. This plan hinges on community transmission data, which is allegedly science-based but is not common sense-based. Let's remind ourselves COVID poses nearly zero risk to healthy children, and masks do more harm than good. Show us the data where masking kids in classrooms reduces community transmission. You can't because the data doesn't exist. Your policy should have read, "Masks are optional starting tomorrow, full stop." If teachers, parents, or unions balk, point to the thousands of classrooms across America where schools remain open all year long with maskless students and no measurable transmission.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Binkley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am here tonight just to rededicate myself to opposing people who abuse you. I am here to say thank you again, but also to say, not just for what you're doing now, but to apologize for our politicians in Richmond who have threatened you, to apologize for those who said they supported our schools and are not, and to promise you that I was there today, I'll be there tomorrow, and we will keep fighting the good fight for the number-one schools in the country, according to Forbes, that we created as a community, as a group of people who believe in education, in learning, imagination, and empathy for others. Those three values drive our schools, and they will continue to, and I thank you for being the people who do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Solomon Kefalu. Our next speaker is Alana Randolph. Our next speaker is David Hatcher.
May the words of my mouth and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. Many years ago, a career coach asked his clients, "What are you pretending not to know?" But instead of asking the board to consider some things that I wanted to talk about pretending, "What are you pretending not to know?", I wanted to concentrate on one thing that I mentioned two months ago to this board, and I mentioned to the previous board a few years ago. What are you pretending not to know here in the Lord Fairfax, who owned 150 slaves, county? Are you pretending not to know that you talk about history and racism and separation and everything, and here you will not take the symbolic step of protesting or petitioning the Board of Supervisors to rename the Lord Fairfax, who owned 150 slaves, county? 150 slaves. I served in Vietnam after Colin Powell. I worked for him at the Department of State. I had many non-commissioned officers in Vietnam under me, all of whom, like me, were products of public schools. So please, consider taking the symbolic step instead of pretending not to know that this county's legacy was a man who owned 150 slaves. The clock is ticking.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bridget Thompson.
I just want to remind our audience to please be mindful of the outbursts.
Our next speaker is Hassan Shaw. Margot Cuja.
Good evening. While my children are grown and are dyslexic, I'm here to talk about literacy instruction for every current FCPS student. I want to share a little bit about my background. I was on the English Language Arts Textbook Adoption Committee in 1998, fighting for evidence-based instruction. I went back to school and earned a Master of Education with a specialization in reading from UVA, graduating with honors. I taught reading for six years at a private school, and I now tutor children in reading. As many know, teaching children to read is a debate that has played out for nearly 40 years. Finally, we have a clear answer driven by science about how the brain learns to read. In 2000, the NIH National Reading Panel told us that using a common literacy program rooted in evidence will improve literacy rates for all children. A school system like FCPS should be leading the way in reading rates. We have highly educated teachers who are dedicated and caring, but they aren't given access to a high-quality training and curriculum that follows the science of reading. With this 2022 update, we respectfully push for the complete removal of balanced literacy, including but not limited to reading recovery, level literacy intervention, Thamdis and Penel, Lucy Calkins, units of study, and the DRA assessment. The scientific evidence shows that programs that use balanced literacy have negative impacts on our children. Data also tells us that 95% of kids can learn to read, yes, 95%, with structured literacy. Level readers which are used in balanced literacy are books that rely on illustrations and context in order to determine the unfamiliar words.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Mallard. Our next speaker is Stare Calhoun. We also have one video testimony this evening. Kate Carey.
Good evening. Fairfax County Schools must create an emergency independent committee to evaluate all its public engagement. Importantly, students who speak here need to be protected. Students should be known to the school board, but by default, their names should not be published. Additionally, and this goes without saying, no one should roam around the audience with a video camera, taking video of minors and posting it on Twitter or giving it to questionable news sources without the student's consent. Such reprehensible conduct should make these people ineligible for future meetings or to be on school property. Courthouses have no cellphone rules, and that's clearly necessary here. This public citizens' comment portion of school board meetings has outlived its intended purposes of transparency. Dark money operatives have strategized to use this forum as a means for turning out propaganda and false narratives. When people speak, they endanger themselves to social media trolls and doxing by dubious media networks. We need you to protect us. People should submit questions in advance, and a staff person could read the questions. This approach would remove grandstanding. Manufactured grandstanding is working and allowing these radical groups to skirt normal avenues of complaint. That's not fair. Members of the public are welcome to speak, yet all speakers should explain their relationship to the school system. If they have a Fairfax student, state that, which school. If not, make that clear, because many speakers are pretending to have students or grandchildren in FCPS but do not. Enforce your own rules that speakers cannot name individual members of FCPS and make accusations about them. That includes you. Also, figure out a way to protect your staff from supposed journalists who are posting videos, staff photos, with their names all over the internet. No one should have to work under constant pressure of harassment and threats. It is dangerous for their physical and mental health. Thank you for your time this evening.
Madam Chair, we have one more speaker. Paul Torrico.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for your time and the work you do. I'm here as a freshman from Lake Braddock High School, and I've never been in this position before. But I've decided that simply liking and sharing a post on Instagram is but a first step to foster positive change at my school. Students at Lake Braddock have been shocked by the fact that funding was raised for a new statue rather than funding for the students themselves. While we appreciate the Lake Braddock PTSA and the fundraising the parents have done for a new statue, we need more than a new statue. We need more funding for ESOL courses at Lake Braddock. Now, I know that the budgeting of Fairfax County public schools is complicated and that plans are made months in advance, but I'd still like to make the student voices heard. Right now, the students are outraged with the high ratio of students to teachers in ESOL classes, and I hope that this is not the same among other schools in Fairfax County. Our students have reached out to the administration, and we have been told that there is no money for individual lesson plans or another teacher. Those students then put signs in front of the bear statue to contrast the priorities at our school. ESOL students are often immigrants, ESOL students are often most likely to be low-income, they most likely do not have parents that are fluent in English and who can advocate them, and ESOL students at Lake Braddock may be only 5% of the student population, but they deserve better, and that's why I'm here. Please listen to our student voices, please help fund ESOL programs at Lake Braddock, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.02, Superintendent Matters. A call on Dr. Brayburn.
Thank you, Chairman Pakarski, members of the school board, and members of the community. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to just share that we have a COVID rollback plan that we communicated earlier today, as we had promised. We shared that plan, which is based on scientific data and on health metrics, and it gives us a roadmap to move forward safely. We must continue to respect and serve all of our students, including our most vulnerable. While we remain in high transmission right now in our community, cases are dropping. When the Fairfax County community reaches moderate transmission and remains there for seven consecutive days, the following will occur. First, masking will be optional. Universal masking-
Dr. Brayburn, excuse me. I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Pakarski. Masking will be optional. Universal masking will only be required during high or substantial community transmission rates. There also may be times, such as during a school outbreak, when some students and staff would be asked to wear masks during mask-optional community transmission levels to protect student and public health. FCPS employees who are not fully vaccinated or who are unvaccinated will still be required to wear a mask indoors, regardless of transmission level, in alignment with Department of Labor standards. Contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine would still continue. Student screening testing will be available during moderate, substantial, and high community transmission to the greatest extent practicable, in alignment with existing CDC guidance. Screening testing would not be offered for students during low transmission, and we certainly hope we can get to a period of low transmission for our Fairfax County community. For those community members who want to monitor community transmission rates, and again, we're all monitoring them very carefully. and again, we're all monitoring them very carefully and want to see the continued downward trend occur, this data can be found on the Virginia Department of Health website, which is linked on our website. Just go to our website, fcps.edu, and search for COVID-19 health metrics. And we'll be sharing them with you as well on an ongoing basis. Please note again, as I said at this time, we're currently in a high state of community transmission, and masks will continue to be required in our schools. We may need to adjust our layered prevention strategy should the region experience a surge, which we all hope will not happen, or there's a widespread illness that could impact our ability to safely provide in-person instruction. We must continue to make in-person, safe in-person instruction for our students our first and foremost goal. And we need, as an FCPS community, as many of our speakers talked about tonight, to continue to respect and serve all of our students, including the most vulnerable, in meeting every child by name and by need. And I ask our community to continue to do everything we can to come together as a school system. We're all trying to do the best we can. After two years of this pandemic, we are all tired, exhausted, but we must continue to find ways to build bridges from each of our perspectives and move forward, because our kids don't get another chance to be in school. And we need to continue to create the best environment and model for them the kinds of behaviors that we expect our young people to emulate if we're going to continue to have a strong school system, a strong community, and a strong country. I want to remind all of you too that one of the things we've been doing, and we're seeing a great, as COVID cases go down, we see substitute fill rates going back up. Yes. We are not back at 90% yet, which is where we were pre-COVID. We were in the 70s before winter break. We dipped actually below 50% in those first weeks back in January. But we are now seeing substitute fill rates of 75% and greater. And that's just outstanding work on behalf of our HR team, our substitutes, our principals, and I'm just so grateful. However, we're not going to try to not keep going for that 90%. So we are continuing to work to hire high-quality substitute teachers, and our Office of Talent Acquisition and Management will have a virtual job fair on Thursday, February 17th, so that's next Thursday, from 9 to 11. And I want all of our community members to consider applying to work as a substitute teacher. You didn't realize how much fun you're missing. It's a flexible schedule. You can choose the schools you want to work in that may be close to your home. You can make a true difference in your community. For more information on that, please visit our FCPS website and search for Substitute Job Fair. I also want to mention to you that we are continuing something that we began early when I returned here. I came back to Fairfax, and I wanted everybody else to come back to Fairfax too. Our annual Operation Back to Fairfax Seminar virtual event will take place Tuesday, February 22nd, from 5 to 8. And folks who do come to this Back to Fairfax event will have an opportunity to network with current employees in various operational and administrative positions. They can view a live operational employee panel and attend breakout sessions on transportation careers, apprenticeship 101, computer hardware repair, network engineering, tech support, trade careers. We also have current FCPS juniors, seniors, and recent FCPS graduates considering an operational career with FCPS. They are welcome to join this event and can register by searching "Back to Fairfax" on the FCPS website. I also want to set the record straight about facts, which are very important. And one of the facts is about our membership. Our enrollment numbers have continued to increase every month through this school year. And in January, we have returned to being a school division of over 180,000 students. Almost 1,600 more students since the beginning of this school year have returned to FCPS. We know there are still, there's more work to do. There's more families that we are going to continue to reach out to and to partner with and say, "We want you back. We are committed to a safe and healthy environment for your child." And we believe we are the premier school system in this country for public education, and that public education, as Ms. Seismarheiser said tonight, is the foundation of a strong democratic country. So please, please know that we want to continue to work as we do registration here in the spring for next year's courses, that we welcome you to come back to Fairfax. Finally, last but not least, the Virginia School Board Association, every year has in February, School Board Appreciation Month. And I personally, as superintendent, want to thank this school board, along with the Virginia School Board Association, for all the work they have done to support school boards across the Commonwealth, as school board members have tirelessly served this division and the Commonwealth on behalf of all of our students in Fairfax County and in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This school board tackles the enormous job of governing a multimillion-dollar, multi-billion-dollar school division. And it is a job that is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even pre-pandemic, and now has been a set of experiences that I sometimes can't believe that people have had to endure, even discuss tonight. It is considered a part-time job with part-time pay. These members, you all, work full-time days, full-time weeks, as much as I do. And I make a whole lot more money. No, let's just be honest for this public. You, as school board members, making $30,000, $35,000 is an insult. What, 32? So not that we're counting, but 32 is an insult to the amount of hours and service you have to give this community. And I hope one of the things that can happen is how we can continue to figure out in the years ahead to elevate so that we have anybody and everybody with the full opportunity to come and sit behind this dais. And it needs to happen. So I hope that that's something that can happen. But for now, what I can offer is my deep thanks on behalf of the leadership team, our principals and teachers, for everything you've done these last two years especially, but even from the beginning. But this board truly has had only a few weeks prior to the pandemic really happening. You all have been here for me and for the community, and I appreciate your grace. I appreciate your support. We've had our challenges, but I am very, very grateful for all that you have done and will continue to do to uplift kids and students and families and teachers. So thank you so much, and thank you for being champions for children in Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. McLaughlin, did you have your light on?
Just quickly, Dr. Braybrand, because I appreciate you spotlighting the good news on substitute teachers and the, you know, continued push to encourage people. But I did want to share with you in talking to some of our employees who have interfaced with substitute teacher candidates, that I think you and your team need to really visit the process, because I've been told that ours is taking too long and that some teachers are saying we're losing them to other districts who are processing them more quickly. And I want to just give the caveat that our interim HR Assistant Superintendent Sean McDonald has been working tirelessly and doing a phenomenal job on behalf of the system. So, Mr. McDonald, I'm grateful for all that you have done in one of the most difficult, you know, times in our modern history for public education. But I did want to just let you all know the feedback from the front lines so that, you know, hopefully we can, as we're continuing to appeal and recruit, we figure out where maybe the lag in in processing them is coming through.
No, we'll definitely work on seeing how we can speed up the process. And one of the things I'm so excited about this board, we just had our budget work session. And one of the things in the budget this coming year is giving HR and Sean and his team additional resources so that we can do a better job. But we do want to speed up that substitute pipeline. We're really encouraged to see the fill rate going up, and we'll work to get that supply up here in the next month or so. Thank you.
Agenda item 3.03, Student Representative Matters. I call Mr. Chadbury.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Over the past several months, I have had the incredible experience of working with other student board members across the country on the creation of a National Student Board Member Association. Across this nation, we've seen major strides made in a lot of areas for student representation on school boards. The California Legislature last year passed its Take a Seat Bill, which mandates the creation of a student board member position in California school districts where either 10% of that district's high school student body or 500 high school students, whichever is lower, sign a petition demanding a seat at the table. Additionally, the state of Maryland has many counties, including Montgomery, Anne Arundel, and Howard, in which student board members have voting rights on the issues that come to the floor. And I'd like to mention Montgomery County is just across the Potomac from us. Meanwhile, however, Virginia still deals with, I think, a lot of long-term impacts of policies from when our state looked very different that may not necessarily serve our needs of today. There is a law from 1999 enshrined in the Code of Virginia that right now functionally prohibits student representatives from serving as actual board members. So let me read a few excerpts. One, "The student representative shall serve in a non-voting advisory capacity." And two, and this is the real kicker when I look at it, "Student representatives shall not be construed to be members of local school boards for any purpose, including but not limited to making any official decision." And so I would just like to note that, right, I don't think there's any other level of government where those who are affected by the policies that we make, the students, don't have an elected representative who can vote on the policies that impact their constituency, the 180,000 kids in this district. And what we also witness nationwide with student board members is the dire need for training upon entering the office and inability to operate in a full professional capacity. That means being able to have a robust support system, just like the adults, and being able to fully advocate for the kids through their position. And so I think it really is worth taking a look within our governance, both individually as a school board and in collaboration with some of our local state lawmakers, at what the purpose of the student representative role should be. Right? Because as of right now, the way that things were set up, on everything from making remarks on individual items to professional supports within the office, they make it so that the expectation, at least when the office was created, was for the student rep to be a mouthpiece for the student body rather than an active influencer of policy decisions. And there may have been a time when this was the best way to go about student representation, but I would encourage everyone to really examine and question whether that's the best way to do things in the year 2022. I actually remember watching a TED Talk by a then-superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools. And she talked about her interactions with student voice and students making policy differences in her district. One thing she noted that really inspired her as an educator was that our schools always talk about teaching students to be productive contributors to society. However, if you look at the dictionary definition, "A contributor is merely a person or thing that contributes to something." And so what she said was that it's not enough to strive for raising a generation of contributors. We need to raise a generation of influencers in our schools. We, the students, are capable of charting the course of our society's future and the policies that impact us. And we're not waiting for destiny to do something for us. We are getting up and fighting for what we believe in. And so the struggle between influencer and contributor also exists notably within all of our forums through the district that do promote student voice in FCPS. Last night, I was having a very open and honest phone conversation with our SAC president. And it was clear there were quite a few frustrations among the broader student body and a lot of SAC delegates. And so what I was told was, "Look, this is supposed to be student-led, but frankly, we have adults who make the SAC agendas, tell us exactly what we can and can't do, and essentially shape every facet of how we operate in policy." So in my comparative government class this year, as we learn about systems of governance across the world, we keep coming back to this idea of democratic deficits, where purportedly democratic organizations or governments fall short of actually fulfilling the principles of a democracy. And so I think in terms of really making sure that we are serving student needs, and especially when we say that we're going to platform students, we make sure we do it right, and we do it in as representative of a way as possible. Another thing that that student president mentioned to me was, "Look at the name." It is the Superintendent's Advisory Council, not the Student Advisory Council to the superintendent. So no matter who our superintendent is, whether it's an amazing one like Dr. Braybrand or potentially a new superintendent, that superintendent picks the focus topics for the students to work on, rather than the students picking them themselves. Additionally, there is another adult on staff who decides how the meetings are run, when we can meet, what we are allowed to talk about, and what policy ideas from students are or aren't acceptable. And it's not just a matter of student safety either. A lot of it is kind of discretionary and just like, "Oh, I don't really think you should talk about that." And so even though students are doing the work, they are simply contributing to a pre-engineered system and catering to a predetermined set of goals. In other words, the system right now is set up so that student leaders in FCPS can be contributors, but they're not allowed to be influencers. Ensuring that, kind of going back to that National Student Board Member Association, and really making sure that we can advocate for students across the country, it's really important to ensure that, one, the student board member position is promoted and expanded in districts throughout the nation. And, two, that student board members have the ability to serve their own student bodies in a full professional capacity. That means being able to understand, you know, both the written and unwritten rules of what goes on, and get that full training. Because I think something that is, once again overlooked, is that oftentimes when student representatives come into office, they're not given the same formal training as adult board members. They're given kind of a brief orientation, but then really kind of put into the role. And they're essentially told, "Okay, you have a year. You got to figure out what to do with it." And so as students on school boards, we have been working collaboratively to create a space where that is possible. And we have to dedicate ourselves to fighting the three Ds of student suppression: delegitimization, demonization, and double standards, to help us enter a new era for student voice. And so we have seen many student-led groups right here in Fairfax County lead the way in uplifting student voice, including the creation of a first-of-its-kind committee on raising student voices at McLean High School, which is designed to bridge the divide between all students and school administration. But until we tackle the issue of uplifting student voices at the district level, we won't reach a place where our goals on behalf of the students can truly be realized. And it all goes back to that very concept that the governed are able to influence the policies that affect them. And there have been amazing models from across the country also on how we can build up student-centered institutions for decision-making, including the structure of the Montgomery County Regional SGA, their district's equivalent of SAC. But now it is up to all of us to ensure that our next generation isn't just there to contribute, it is here to make a difference. The other thing that I did want to mention that slipped my mind at the end of my remarks last week is in talking about professional support that is truly career-changing to enter a space that fosters growth, or, sorry, it is truly career-changing and I think mindset-changing to enter a space that fosters growth for school board members. And after attending that NSBA Equity Symposium, I really got to chat with so many, mostly adult board members, who really felt that their mindset and pieces of how they did their job had changed. And so that's why I would also highly encourage our board to consider attending the NSBA Conference in San Diego, which is going to be held from April 2nd to 4th, and really encourage us to explore new ways where we can get creative and be willing to fight hard fights on behalf of students. And I think it may be one of the number-one opportunities for us to grow as student board members. Thank you so much. Or, excuse me, as board members at large, not just student board members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item 4.02, Capital Improvement Program, and I call on Ms. Kuzgamar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve the proposed FCPS FY 2023 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Aaron. Ms. Kuzgamar, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, briefly. I want to thank our staff for all of their hard work in pulling together our CIP plan this year. We have struggled for a number of years with budgetary concerns, and we are currently faced with a 37-year renovation cycle- faced with a 37-year renovation cycle. But the plan nonetheless addresses development concerns across the county and hopefully tries to plan for additional improvements. It also reflects the bond referendum that passed, allowing additional funds of $360 million that was approved by our voters, and I want to say thank you. It includes renovation of two high schools and covers capital programs and also the improvements that I mentioned before. Typically, we have had $180 million yearly cap on general obligation bonds, but I also thank the Board of Supervisors, who has allocated an annual transfer of an additional $13.1 million to improve the delayed renovation cycle. What we've learned over time is that we need to take care of infrastructure repairs such as roofs and parking lots and mechanical systems was actually adding to our renovation cycle. So I do want to say thank you. We continue to work on such issues as eliminating trailers, providing creative learning spaces, and improving communications within our community to participate in the capital improvement process. I know that there are many people in the community who wish that we could speed this up, and we're doing the best that we can with the funds that we have. And we will, I'm sure we will be on the camp, not the trail, talking to our constituents to hear those concerns, and I will continue to work as, at least this year, as a comprehensive planning development liaison for the board and work with my colleague, Ms. Tolan, who works with our citizens as part of FPAC. I also, Dr. Braybrand, want to ask you a question in support of this, whether, you heard the comment from our student with respect to menstrual supplies not being available in middle schools. And as you know, a couple of years ago, I brought forth a motion to make sure that that was available. So I'd like to propose that you can bring us a report on the status so that, I don't think we need to necessarily make a formal motion, but hopefully we can follow up and make sure that we are addressing that concern.
Yeah, I checked as that came out and talked already to Dr. Board, and we sent you guys some updates in both May and June, right at the end of last year around this. So we can get, we'll give you that information and then do a fresh, a fresh check of where we are now, including following up that student personally, and find out what's going on in the survey and what other schools were involved. We did a lot of work on that actually prior to the pandemic, and we don't want to have that focus go away. So I will follow up and get you guys some more information.
Well, I know, we've been a little busy during COVID, but I thought I'd mention it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron.
Yeah, this is a tremendous document and statement and effort that holds the Division accountable to the public's investment and also takes care to really meticulously plan for the use of every dollar. And I also want to continue to thank our public, our voters, for approving the bond. It's a wonderful, you know, reinforcement of the community's commitment to our public schools with an over 70% approval rating for the bond. And I want to thank our bond committee, who does a lot of outreach work to educate the community about the significant return on investment of these bonds. And one more thank you also to the Board of Supervisors for adjusting that cap on the bond to better invest in facilities, because we know it's not only our students who are learning here, but our schools are very widely used inside and outside on the fields. They are a community resource. I think that this document, this CIP, does encompass many of the priorities of the community and as well as the board, as we have reflected, particularly some of the ones I've helped champion, like net zero and solar energy. And I know we're going to hear much more about those aspects of the CIP in a little bit. I do just want to mention that, you know, the Cap Improvement Plan is the guiding document for how we work on boundaries. And, you know, the board has asked for research on the model practices for setting boundary policy, but the difficult work of actually analyzing our boundaries really lies ahead of us. And I've said earlier this week, it's an embarrassment that we have pockets of poverty in this county that are borne out by school boundaries. And I think we need to do this hard work with a lot of community input and a lot of reckoning of what kind of community we want to be. So I look forward to that hard work, and that starts with the approval of this CIP.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, I have read through the CIP, like many other CIPs, for the last couple of years with great interest. And one of the things that I brought forward to the board in 2020 is the need for a new renovation queue. Our renovation queue, as we know, was developed, I think, in like 2000, early 2000s, I think even spearheaded, we learned by my predecessor, Janie Strauss. So here we are in 2021, and we are getting toward the end of the list of schools on that renovation queue. And we were distracted a little bit the last couple of years, but I am hopeful we will continue to move this forward. Fortunately, due to the many comments and the interest in our last CIP work session in getting the renovation queue updated as soon as possible and continued efforts by myself and my colleagues, work has already begun on this renovation queue in just the past couple of weeks. Carl Frisch and I have reached out to staff, and we're considering doing a follow-on motion to the CIP this evening. But we are assured, since this work has already begun on an RFP, to look for a consultant to begin looking at the criteria for this new renovation queue. We are not going to bring this motion forward. And so I'm looking forward to the, following the work on this and seeing how this transpires over the next months. In addition, as Ms. Kies-Gamarra, I think we'll talk a little bit more during the committee reports tonight. Our CPDC Committee is making progress on looking at a more accurate student yield formula under the leadership of Ms. Laura Jane Cohen. Last year, CPDC brought this issue forward, and staff has done some great work on this. And this is particularly important in areas of intense development like Tysons and Bark and the Route 28 corridor. So I want to thank our planning staff also for attending a meeting with me last night with citizens to discuss the impact of the development in the Tysons area and its impact on area schools. And we did talk about the student yield formula and its importance and the importance of that work moving forward as well. So I will not bring a motion on that either, because I do know that that work is moving forward. I do want to thank staff, Mr. Plattenberg, and our planning staff for answering the many, many questions I had about this CIP. And I'm looking forward to discussing our follow-on motions and working toward an even better CIP next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Plattenberg, I really appreciated that my colleagues are very much wanting to ensure that our renovation queue is as up-to-date and evaluated as much as possible. I was just conferring with Ms. Darnett Kofax. We do recall during our tenure on the board, but I don't know if it was with yours or Mr. Tisdatt, your predecessor, that we had the board work with staff about the renovation queue. So is that something that you and your team can make sure that, as the board certainly looks at having a revised and updated evaluation on the queue, that we bring the more recent history on this effort?
Yeah, I don't know what my predecessor may have done, may or may not have done. But I do, I do know that we did bring the two work sessions with the prior governing bodies about the queue and the information related to it. We are in the process, because there was, I believe, a follow-on in one of the meetings for us to go ahead and perform the work, to go ahead and prepare, getting a consultant to come in and assist with the process of identification of what the prioritization would be. The prior queue had a number of different items, ones that addressed specifically the educational components that were tied to the core, that were tied to graduation, also the age and condition of the facility, and then there was also some components that tied to ancillary instructional programs that we had. And I can go into a lot more detail about that, but really reprioritizing, although it didn't say equity, as it is the center of all of our work, and it did reference that in those criteria and those rating percentages. We would want to make sure that this consultant would help guide the board in creating what this body feels are the prioritization for the ranking, to go ahead and then go forward with having outside group come in and do the analysis, as was done in the past.
Yes, thank you. As I said, I just think that as we look to do this work with the consultant, we would want to just bring in any of the recent work that's been done on that, just to help inform where we've been and where we hope to go. But I'm always in favor of us, you know, looking at our current practices and how we get better. So, Ms. Tolan, I appreciate you and Mr. Frisch having that on your horizon for us to do. The other thing that I just wanted to share about the CIP, because, again, this is something that the board recently had, the Boundary Consultant Report. And in the most recent work session we had, and now tonight, board members are talking about our boundaries. And I just want to remind our public that we did have the Boundary Consultant come and present to the board, and that one of the things that continues to be part of the conversation is what drives changing boundaries. And looking at things like capacity, looking at things like the transportation impact on the number of minutes that students will be on buses, the impact of moving students out of their neighborhood schools and into other communities, those are all factors that play a role. And so while I understand that we always want to look at how do we best educate our students, how do we best utilize the limited facilities that we find most of our schools with overcrowding challenges, I don't take lightly this conversation that our Boundary Consultant in our communities continue to talk about the value of our neighborhood schools. And so I know that in the past, this has generated a lot of concern from the community and a sense the board's trying to do something that I have not heard the board consider to this time. And I hope we will continue to be very mindful when we talk about our boundaries and what we use them for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Mr. Plattenberg and his team for always taking the time to listen to each of us as the CIP comes together. I think the document itself this year is a testament to the collaboration we've had and the success we've had. As I noted during the work session right there in writing, it talks about some of the work around elementary school in Dr. Anderson's district and the boundaries, the progress around the boundary considerations at McLean Langley and the new elementary school in Dunloring. And those were all things that, just two years ago, were listed in the CIP as areas of concern that needed to be addressed. So I think we can all be proud that those things have moved forward with your team. And, you know, we had a work session about the budget recently, where we talked about the need to adequately fund the work in your office for implementing and tracking the progress on our Joint Environmental Task Force goals. And I'm excited that the superintendent is making that one of his consideration areas as he thinks through how we're going to allocate spending. So I'm very much looking forward to working with you in the years ahead as we move forward on these issues. I also want to note that this CIP is the first one where we have projects listed that we've bonded that will be built net zero or planned for net zero, which is tremendously exciting. The last bond that we had on the ballot was the first one that came in under the new Joint Environmental Task Force recommendations, that new renovations and construction projects be designed net zero. So that's very exciting. I also want to, you know, echo what Ms. Tolan said about the queue. I think that was an area of great consensus at our work session, that we would want to move forward with figuring out what criteria, what metrics we're going to be looking at as that plan comes together. And it was, it was great to feel heard after that work session, when we reached out about doing a follow-on motion, to find out that the work, it was only like 48 hours, and the work was already underway to get that process working. So kudos to you and your team. That's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of the thanks for Mr. Plattenberg and his team. You know, I remember even before on the board, like, my family would tease me because I went to bed with the CIP, I had like all these, all these flags and notes and highlights of different areas of concern. And the planning nerd in me was very grateful to come across the planning nerds in your shop as well. So I do feel so much like this CIP is definitely, has a lot of our voice in it and the different things that are important to our community as we move forward. I am really grateful about redoing the queue. I think the joint CIP gives us an even better excuse to get to do that, because we're very grateful to our county partners for finding a way to find some more money for us and our facilities. And so I'm very grateful that we're going to be relooking and looking at where building in our community is, is happening and has happened, and how we've changed as a community, I think, during the pandemic. This is a different way of looking at some of what we do. So I have a follow-on coming up. I know that we have more to come, but I'm excited about this CIP and what's to come.
Thank you. I will go ahead and call for the vote. The motion will be posted before us on the screen. There it is. All those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. Wonderful. I'll turn the meeting over quickly to Ms. Sizemore Heiser for the next motion.
Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Roberts, oh, sorry, I apologize. I call Ms. Cohen. For a motion, sorry.
Thank you. I move to direct the superintendent to execute the appropriate professional services contract for the purpose of identifying and presenting to the school board, for consideration and concurrence, a location, new, existing FCPS, or any other appropriate property for the Western High School, so that site may be included in the FY 2024-28 CIP.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, thank you. This has been a long time in coming. I appreciate Ms. Gillis in Mr. Plattenberg's office sending us some history that the 2013 bond was actually the first bond that was passed, talking about a proposed Western High School to deal with the westward expansion, no historical pun intended, of Fairfax County. And, and at that point, $10 million was bonded. In the interim, you know, we've continued to grow as a school system, but as a county too. And so less and less land readily available, but more need particularly on the western side. And as we've seen the Silver Line expand toward Dulles, that is something that has even increased even more the need out there and more building. And then we have schools that are really at past maximum capacity. We have Centerville that's up for renovation in 2025, but is still at like 130% capacity. Even a massive renovation of that facility, given the footprint of the school, is still not going to be enough. We have Chantilly over capacity, Westfield close to capacity. And so we just continue to need greater resources out in that, out in that area. And I look forward to working with facilities and seeing if they're able to come up using some of the new conversations we had. Is this going to be existing FCPS property? Is it new property we'll purchase? Or are there, again, when we have these conversations about what's the high school of the future look like, maybe there's some options that we have out that direction that's either unused office space or... So I look forward to the creativity of Mr. Plattenberg's shop and working with the county as well and figuring out where we can finally have this Western High School.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I'll just briefly, Ms.
Yeah, I'll just briefly. Ms. Cohen did such a good job. You know, this is something that Ms. Cohen and I have discussed for many, many years long before we got on the board. And it was actually identified as a need starting in 2011. And since then, there have been expansions at different high schools to try to, you know, meet some of this need, but it is long overdue. And the money from two bonds now has been set aside to start that process of looking for land or, you know, repurposing a building. And even once, you know, we get that step, we are many, many years before completion of another high school. So very happy to second this. It's a big need in our area and growing development, you know, continues out in the western part of the county. And Ms. Tolan and I have also had quite a few conversations about some ideas about possible programming, even though it's many years away. You know, we're already starting to talk about it and look forward to offering some of those suggestions and having some conversations. Thank you.
I see there's several board members who want to speak. Ms. LeMaitre followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. And thank you to my colleagues for bringing this. I think they spoke eloquently to the purpose. I'm chopping up my comments to where it's relevant on the follow-ons rather than commenting on the original, the main motion. Because I think immediately when we hear of, oh, we're going to build a new high school, we think, well, where else might we need it? From an equity perspective, where does that fit? Is that fair? So I did just want to highlight some of the boundary work that is ongoing. Mr. Plattenberg, can you please speak to that briefly? And then, of course, hopefully, and I appreciated Ms. Maron emphasizing this in the direction of where our board work should be going.
If you, yeah, thank you very much. If you're asking about the boundary policy work, what the status of that is, the recommendation that came out of the work session, one of the follow-ons for us to continue, was to have staff take a look at the recommendation. We said that it closely aligned with staff's initial recommendation had been. There were some things that I believe Ms. McLaughlin mentioned that were brought up in as part of that for us to look at in a little more granularity. So our plan is we've wrapped up taking a look at that, our assessment of it. We're going to be finalizing that work and presenting it to the superintendent and cabinet and then to the chair for scheduling for an upcoming work session so that the board can have further discussion about the boundary policy. But it should be coming really soon, I think, in early spring.
Okay, great. Ms. Pocarski, hopefully, and Ms. Sizemore Heiser. I'm looking forward to seeing that on the agenda, if it's not already, for us to make sure we resolve that because I know that the subsequent conversations, of course, will have more to do with the implementation and projects we want to think about building on that policy based on what priorities we land on from the consultant's recommendations, which, again, a little bit tangential, but related, obviously, as we think about capacity challenges across the county. And really, just overall, really excited. Thank you, Ms. Cohen and Ms. Pocarski for bringing this. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I first want to say to both the makers of this follow-on motion, I know how incredibly busy we are and I also know how very large our board of 12 is. I wish we'd had a chance to talk because I feel like there's no question I support this. But I am trying to figure out a little bit more information here. So I'm going to ask Mr. Plattenberg to see if he can help clear some things up. So Mr. Plattenberg, in terms of, as Ms. Pocarski noted, that we've been trying to set aside bond money for this Western High School, and it does fall in the tenure that I've been on the board, so very familiar with the need and all of that. But what exactly is the dollar amount that we have set aside for this dedicated need?
Yeah, there have been two set asides. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. There have been two set asides. One was for $10 million and the other one was for $13 million in two different bond referents. That was for the actual site purchase. Now, you know, it was clearly noted in previous CIPs that we didn't have any physical land that was set aside for this purpose, even though we did have some adjacent land of one of our school properties. But we believe the community use of that is so rampant and so necessary in that part of the county that we'd have to look and be creative. This motion, the way staff interprets it, is really just directing us to go ahead and get the work going, to identify potential sites and bring them back before the school board for consideration. Our process associated with that, just so as a refresher or primer for those who may not recall, is really because it has to do with issues that are confidential in nature and negotiating on behalf of the school board for the best interest and the best cost for the taxpayers of Fairfax County are confidential. They are ones where we share contractual language and potentialities in generally a closed session with the school board for guidance and concurrence on the direction of staff. We've done that in the past with prior property purchases. The one that I will mention that comes to mind is Bailey's Upper when we went through that process. So for those of you who were involved in that, it's one of those things where we come back with different scenarios, different options, the good and the bad and the ugly of all the different scenarios that we could possibly have, and then, of course, staff's recommendation moving forward. It really would get us moving. And what I would say to that is it gets the ball rolling and every step along the way is a process of sequential steps. So within new school construction, site identification is a critical hurdle to go over. Then the second step is site design and permitting process before then we go out to bid. Much of this is articulated in the CIP that you all have referenced before, and I say that just for the public's awareness, that it speaks to the different process, the different phases of our capital program. But thank you for that question. I hope I answered it appropriately.
No, that was great. $23 million is how I understand it then, that we would have in, at our access for this potential property purchase. I so appreciate that you have the most amazing collaborative approach to your work with all of us as board members. So I guess I want to just make sure, are there any reservations that you have as we look to support our colleagues in this direction? Because, you know, we're, not a single one of us sitting up here is, is an operational expert. So I just want to know before I vote on something, is there anything we're not considering? Because it's very specific saying that, you know, we're going to, you know, put this site into our CIP.
Yeah, I don't have any reticence regarding that, the process associated with it. I will say that I do believe this will require, and the opportunity is ripe, given not just the one Fairfax initiatives, the equity initiatives, it gives us the opportunity to work with other county agencies, specifically the Fairfax County Park Authority, who's been a great partner in the past, and I'd look to them to continue in the future, for creative solutions for us to address this. The co-location of properties, all of the visioning that this board and this body has collectively guided staff will definitely have to come into play with this selection process. So for me, it really is just coming forward with the selection criteria and those recommendations. Included in that would be if we uncover, for your, for which you mentioned, any potential concerns, if we uncover any issues associated with that or hindrances or impacts of the CIP, the capital program, or anything else would be part of the comprehensive briefing and recommendation to this body.
Great. Thank you. I will say to my colleagues that I have certainly shared the concerns of our residents in the western part of the county, certainly looking at where our families, even in the Braddock District, where we've finding the overcrowding impacts of some of the western high schools and the spillover effect then to where we're also trying to send neighboring elementary schools to our high school limitations. So again, absolutely support the desire for both of you to really help this board send that direction of intentionality to our staff. Don't have any reservations about that at all. I did want to make sure that we had the funds that we would need to actually affect the direction that we're wanting to give staff. And that part I was not as clear on. So, you know, in general, it would be my sense that we can support this and then staff can always come and let us know if something were to develop that we couldn't have foreseen. But very happy to signal to the western part of the county, we see you, we hear you, it's been long overdue. And if we have this opportunity now to finally do something with intentionality, let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Ms. Cohen wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen. I apologize.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the feedback about not getting in touch with you, but the recognition of how crazy we all are during the week. I did email this to everybody on Monday just to make sure. I know that our emails get so piled up that it's hard to make sure that you've seen it. But I did definitely want to let you know that we worked very closely with Mr. Plattenberg's shop, who actually helped us craft this language. So I didn't want you to think that we had gone rogue. We were very grateful for Mr. Plattenberg and Ms. Gillis in helping us put all of this together.
Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. You can't undersell how much of an impact a new western high school will have in many magisterial districts. Oakton High School, which is coming to the end of its renovation project, will open significantly over capacity. And this will have a, an effect on that school, which is, you know, right in the heart of Providence District. So I very much appreciate the thinking of my colleagues here and looking forward. And I would note that we're giving a couple of years here for this to come into play. So I look forward to seeing what that location ends up being and also seeing what kind of programming we might offer there.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Yes, thank you very much. And I really appreciate the makers of this motion because having, I continue to represent the Mount Vernon in South County area, and I know how challenging it is when you have a community that is underserved with facilities. And so I think this is a really important initiative. My question, though, is something a little bit along the lines of what Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, but kind of looking out. Our planning process is so long. We get ourselves bonded for the purchase of land, and then the next step is the bonding process for the planning. And then the third step is the bonding process for the actual building of a facility. So given that we are utilizing professional services contractors to go out and find this land and come back for a recommendation, it's not a signing on the dotted line of the specific location. That is something that obviously this board makes that decision. However, I'm wondering if, given that extended timeline for our bonding process, if we need to just make a slight modification to this follow-on motion to allow for the, to ensure that we have, what I would say is, in the preparation of materials that may be necessary for a bond referendum package to ensure that the adequate funding for both the acquisition and beginning the planning process is there.
Ms. Cohen? Did you want to respond to Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yeah, absolutely. No, we, we just very quickly conferred and would be really happy to adopt that language. But I know Mr. Morgan will say we need to ask if we can adopt it without objection.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, that's correct. You can adopt it by unanimous consent if there are no objections.
If there are no objections?
Because once again, we would have to approve the final language anyway, but this gets us moving forward.
Can we see the final, can we see the language that Ms. Corbett Sanders recommended?
Sure. I would just say it ends now with included in the fiscal year 2024-28 CIP. And I would add to it, and the preparation of materials that may be necessary for a future bond referent, bond package, to allow for the planning process to begin.
If there's no objection, maybe include this language and then I'll continue with the next comment.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand.
So we have, what the ladies have just said is that you have, or what you said is you have $23 million for the acquisition of a site. The next bond, do you have a bond, have you already put in the bond for the planning of the school?
Oh, now I see. Yeah, I'm sorry. I understand what you're asking for. No, no, there's been no design funding nor any construction funding. And if you look on page 40 of the CIP, that's where we show the cash flow that I think you're referring to. Okay, I was just trying to...
So that's what we want to make sure is that as part of this planning process and...
That the timeline associated and when the bonds would have to include to incorporate both the design...
Correct.
Okay.
So is there any other, if there's no objection to adding this language, I will continue. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Thank you. I appreciate the makers of the motion and the comments. To try to whittle down a little bit, I will say, as the former planning commissioner for this area, I understand the need for this. Have been involved in very early discussions about how we could get this done. And I wasn't on the school board at the time, but there was just no movement. I would say that I, going forward, I would like for us to be very intentional and transparent with the community. And I just want to clarify a couple of things, Mr. Plattenberg. As I see this motion, we are authorizing the superintendent, and he will then direct you to go forward and engage professional services to try to ascertain what we need to identify land for this school. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And so at what point would you notify the board of what those professional services would include in the cost?
Well, generally, the staff work around that is, once the direction is to go ahead and engage in professional services for site acquisition, that's an operational component that staff would then undertake. In the past, there hasn't been a conversation other than the direction, giving us to go ahead and identify potential sites. And then we, as I stated before, we bring back those potential sites. And I mentioned where it's included in the CIP that identifies what bond it should be included in for these components. Yeah, so we'd be coming back and we could also include that as part of our briefing in closed session.
Well, the reason I ask is because we're having rather extensive conversation in a number of arenas, no need to give details at this point, but where people are asking, when does the process begin? When do we have to start outreach? When does the community find out what we're doing? When do, you know, all of those details. So I'm trying to figure out, what can the board expect with respect to when you come back? Are you saying that you would just hire this professional, get the information you need, and then come back to us? And what, you know, I'd like to identify that because I think perhaps the board may need to clarify
Yes.
what the expectations will be so that the community can understand as well.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Yes, in fact, the process is exactly as you stated. Staff would go ahead and engage. Staff would come back with the recommendations that would be provided by the consultant services, based upon a number of criteria, the state criteria for minimum size of schools, the recommendations they provide, our historical approaches, and then any creative ideas that we've done in the past to provide an educational setting. Those would be brought back in closed session. The public would not be made aware of those generally because of the fact that it has to do, and once you identify a location that a public entity is looking at, the price escalation is usually rather exorbitant. And it affects your negotiating skills at the bottom line. But that being said, you know, we could talk about additional processes as a part of that recommendation in the closed session when we come back with potential sites. And I have some ideas that I don't want to expose publicly here that would impact, the potentially impact or adversely our negotiating power, but may achieve, I think, where you're headed in your conversations about this. So when, at the time that the board would consider those sites and give staff further direction, that's the potential time for conversation. I would look for legal counsel to also provide guidance on that and advisement to the board.
Okay. So I really am not trying to get in your business at all. What I would like to do is make sure the community understands at what point they're going to be notified. And that also, at what point the community, this board, will have conversations on how to move... to move forward. So it sounds like, I think I gathered from that extensive explanation, is that we would, you would get the professional services and also you would be talking to the board about ascertaining the land, at which point, once we get that land, then we would have additional conversations. Is that correct?
That is one scenario. There are others where you can get first right refusals. There are a number of techniques that you can.
Okay.
For, yeah, there are a number of different options, but generally speaking, yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we have a clear line, because I don't have to remind you of some of the meetings we had this week where, you know, we need to identify when that communication with the public would begin, but it sounds like at the point of purchase, we can have that conversation. Correct? Did I lose you?
Yeah, no, you didn't lose me. I thought you were restating what I said, yes.
Oh, I could have. I have a habit of doing that. All right, thank you. I fully support this. I, you know, I just wanted you guys to know that this has been something that I've worked with even before being on the board. And the fact of the matter is, at some point, we do have to deal with capacity issues, and this is one way that the community can actually be excited about dealing with those as opposed to some other alternatives. So thank you.
Great. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you for bringing the motion forward. I know we've had a number of discussions about the Western High School, where it might be, what it might look like. Mr. Plattenberg, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things with you. Number one, there was some discussion about the Hutchison School Site being utilized for this high school, and just for the community, I wanted to confirm that that is no longer being considered?
To directly answer the question, I will consider every possible option and scenario in a recommendation and not preclude or try to withhold any to the school board. And if that would be one, I would include that as well. I would suggest, however, that given the past experience and given the need for community space, that would not be staff's first recommendation for a location of a property. What am I saying? What I'm saying is, we own property that the Park Authority and the community use for soccer fields right now adjacent to a school. Would that be considered as an option for the school board? Because it is our own property, I would have to come forward with that to say, here is a scenario where I'd have to tear down an existing perfectly good school, build a vertical school in order to make enough size for it, displace the community, which would be adversely, that would just not be advantageous, or I think in the best interest of total community building. But it would be an option that I would have to, I think I would have an obligation to provide to the school board. It would be with a lot of cost. And, you know, I don't think that that would be a viable recommendation, to your point. But I think, you know, unless I'm directed not to, I think it would be, for full transparency, it would have to be on all possibilities, just so the board would be able to compare and contrast the good and the bad and the ugly of any of the scenarios. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
No, that answered my question. And then I had similar questions to other board members, just, but I think you've already answered them, just about that. Even though this is worded very specifically, there's flexibility in here for staff to come forward with different ideas, the timing may be even be a little bit different, depending what's in the marketplace and what we find. Excellent. Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. I certainly like Ms. Corbett Sanders, you know, in a district where we, you know, McLean in particular, overcrowding in our schools is acute, and, you know, something where we need to be looking for solutions. So I, you know, we've had many conversations about this. You know, and also having worked down in the Centerville-Chantilly area, I know, you know, what's going on down there and the incredible growth. So it would be exciting to, you know, potentially have a new high school down there to take care of some of that. And as Ms. Bukarski said, you know, a new high school is an incredible opportunity for a school district to think innovatively and creatively, you know, how do we really move forward, to think about, you know, what kind of education our kids need across the county, and how can we use this new facility? So thank you for bringing forward the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Nakelvax?
So, yeah, I have not had the opportunity to talk to the makers of the motion either. So I do have some questions. Well, first, I'm going to start with Mr. Plattenberg. Mr. Plattenberg, you had already said this. How much is bonded already for this school?
The, there were two bond referendums for site acquisition, and one was mentioned was 2013. I can look them up while we're here, but it was, one was 13 million, one was 10 million. I don't know which for which, but it was.
So 20, 23?
Correct.
Million. And what would, what's the approximate cost to build a brand-new high school right now?
Over 150 million.
A hundred?
I'm sorry, it would be considerable. The site acquisition costs, those are placeholders.
Say that again, I'm having...
The site acquisition costs that we've included, we have been placeholders that have been put in those bond referendum, because we realized when we first funded 10 million, that that would not accommodate through some of the elementary school discussions of price and property in that region. In fact, some of the per acre costs were over a million dollars. So it was one of these things that we put in those placeholders to identify what we think the actual site would cost. The planning and design can be anywhere from about 6% of what that new high school may be every year. So what I'm, what I'm telling you is really how to make a watch when you ask me what time it is. But the reality of the situation is that the cost of the actual school would be predicated on the timing of when it's built, and many factors, such as inflation, supply chain, distribution, and all of the costs associated with materials. So right now, to get me, depending on the size, my first estimate is talking about 150 million. I think it might be closer to 186 million for a high school. But I'd have to really, I'd like to follow up with you to give you a more clear answer, but it's pretty expensive. When you look at our bonding capacity as it currently exists, now, the beauty of this is, the confluence of our bonding capacity has gone up, as was mentioned, by the work of this body and also the board supervisors. And that joint work has resulted in an increase of, it's going to be eventually 50 million over our current 180 million. So we'll have an annual spend, I believe it's in the CIP, is stated at 25 million. And next year, by '23 and '25, we'll have another 25 million for that 50. So by FY '25, we'll be at 100, at $230 million annually for bonding capacity, which allows for the flexibility to incorporate something such as this. So my point is, the timing is good for this conversation. It's a long way to say that, but that's what I said.
Thank you for that. So to Ms. Cohen and Ms. Bukarski. Because we haven't talked about this, even though we've talked a lot this week about a lot of things, because we've been very busy, I'm still not certain, so for you, the way this is reading to me, is your intent to have by '24 a property either purchased? What is your intent? Please explain that to me, since we haven't chatted.
No, just... Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, am I allowed to answer?
Yes, Ms. Cohen.
Sorry. No, this is just identifying and presenting to the school board what, what the sites...
The options are?
What the options are. What are the options? Where have they been? Where are they located in the county? What are they going to cost us? Because, I mean, the true answer may be, what we have all had in these conversations is, land has gotten so expensive that we may need to do something totally outside the box. And as Mr. Plattenberg said, even conversations that we've had with the team about, are there campuses that we have that, you know, like Liberty Middle School, we always talk about, is one of our biggest campuses? Is it an opportunity that maybe you do a Bailey's in a South County model to do something like that? And then you're able to move from the other, but you still would have to do something, you know, up toward Mr. Frisch and Ms. Tolan's area? You know, are there, so what are all of the world of opportunities that may take a little more creativity, probably than they did even 10 years ago because of how land? So it's just to present, like, here are the options that we think make the most sense. This is what, as Mr. Plattenberg said, I think it's going to take a lot of work with the county, too, and maybe looking at what some of our inventory is versus their inventory, and we've talked about that.
We know they have an inventory.
Yeah.
They've been telling us for years about the unrented commercial properties out there. So what could be converted, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's the whole goal, is it may not even wind up looking like purchasing some, you know, vast fields and creating...
And creating it from scratch. Okay. I can support this, then. I was, like I said, we have not had the chance to chat, and I really, what I was concerned about was, what, I wasn't sure if that's what you meant. So thank you. Thank you. Ms. Amish, did you want to speak again?
Yeah. I guess after hearing that, I thought I might have been the only one who didn't get contacted about this, but hearing that others maybe haven't either, I just, I just wanted to, I guess, go back to this equity question just a little bit. I can certainly support the scoping. I don't want to stand in the way of my colleagues' initiative here, and I think that that's a good step. But I'm mindful that, you know, Mr. Plattenberg, when you bring this forward, where, how else are we thinking about needs elsewhere, to just make sure that we're not, you know, moving forward a project where there's some urgency, but there's no clarity on how relative that urgency is to other areas?
Well, that would be certainly part of when we bring back whatever the recommendation may be. And, oh, I forgot to mention that the 10 million was in the 2013 bond, and the 13.5 was in the 2021 bond that was recently passed. So it was a total 23.5.
Yeah, no, I know this conversation has started way before today. I mean, I remember, actually, I think in our first months of being on the board, it was brought to us in one of our work sessions as something that was being thought of. But I still want to be sensitive to this, again, from an equity standpoint, right? Like, the same way when we think about renovations, and we're like, no, we've got to maintain a queue, and it's, that's based on certain standards, and that's fair, and we don't move people up. When we think about building a high school, there are huge implications for what that looks like from an equity standpoint, as to where we decide to do that, because we're prioritizing all these resources into doing it for a particular neighborhood, right? Or a particular locality. So I just, I guess, when bringing this, is it possible to also take a look at where else, even just to identify other, maybe hotspots for potential that we can think about as a board? This one is clearly already in motion, and it's been for years. But again, I want to be mindful that there are other areas that are severely overpopulated. I know Mason District is certainly one of them. So can we do some analysis on that as a part of this project when it's presented?
Ms. Amish, are you presenting a, are you presenting an amendment to this, or are you just asking a question, Mr. Plattenberg?
I guess I'm asking if a certain component, yeah, in the spirit, and trying not to be wordsmithy and adding time to our meeting, I actually, I just want to see if we can capture that in the intent of this, and making sure that that's a consideration within the work to, for discussion, I mean, to be presented for discussion whenever this is brought forward.
Mr. Plattenberg, did you want to answer, or Ms. Cohen, did you want to?
Yeah, I just, I feel if I can, if I can, if...
Please, go ahead.
The way it makes sense to me is making sure that we've considered all ramifications and impacts in the site selection, to ensure that we've taken an equitable look. And my interpretation of the definition of that is, when was mentioned, hotspots, other hotspots that we have, how those are being addressed, and why, whatever location we recommend or would come back as a result of this, how those would be addressing those components as well, to make sure we're equitable in addressing with this investment. That was my interpretation. Certainly, you know, as I've stated at the beginning, equity is the center of everything we do in each of the departments under my purview and across the division. So we would have to be able to articulate that and address that in bringing that back, and to be able to have that conversation with the board.
Right.
And I think that would, that's the intent, as I understood it.
Right. So maybe to clarify, rather than predetermining the outcome of saying that we have adjustments that we've made in other areas that are sufficient, maybe we can take a couple steps back and say, let's take a look as a whole to see where there may be needs, and where certain adjustments have made due up to this point. Maybe we do want to start scoping out and exploring the possibility of building elsewhere. I'd rather say that than to already decide that that's not a possibility. And maybe if I, maybe if I put it this way, I, as a board member, when we have this eventual presentation, will not be able to make an informed and consensual decision for me without having an understanding of where else there is urgency, to be able to prioritize effectively from an equity standpoint. So that's why I'm asking if that could be a component in this, in this conversation, so that we're able to make informed judgments from that equity lens without maybe moving too quickly with good intention on a project that is needed and is good, but that we have no context for in the scale of urgency around the county. And I'm thinking, again, of this as an out-large member, looking at the whole county.
Ms. Cohen, did you want to respond to Ms. Amish's? Well, I know you're...
Yeah, I think I'm just confused, because we, we passed this three CIPs since we've been on the board. And so the whole CIP identifies where there's overcrowding and need. And so for the last 10-plus, 20 years, that area of the county does not have the facilities, so all those schools are overcrowded, and we've continued to grow exponentially the build.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In that part of the county. So I guess, I'm just a little confused that, I mean, that's the, that's the, the whole CIP is showing the hotspots and showing where, so, you know, I think, I, I guess, I, I'm not sure I'm understanding your, your question, like, I, I'm not sure how to answer your question, other than just to point to the CIP as mentioning this need for the last, I don't know, 10?
Yeah, no, no, and, and I, that's precisely why, you know, for me, this is a welcome step in that direction, but with the understanding that there are plenty of other schools in concentrated areas with over 100% capacity, it would make sense for us to start conversations around those areas, too, because to me, this signals, again, an equity challenge, right? And I don't want to say problem, yet, but where we move forward with a project, there are other hotspots that we know exist from these maps, as you've pointed out, but we haven't had conversations about scoping out schools and doing that kind of thing there. So that, if that clarifies, that we make that commitment in tandem.
Thank you, Ms. Amish. Did you want to respond, Ms. Bukarski? Before I go?
Ms. Plattenberg, did you want to try to respond to that?
No, I don't believe anything other than what I've grasped.
That's all part of the CIP process, which is how this was identified. So, you know, the need is there in the context of the whole system, so that's why we're kind of here.
Yeah, 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 I'm trying to say, the need is there, but the need is also elsewhere. And so I'm questioning how we're...
Point of order.
Thank you, Ms. Amish. Dr. Anderson has her light up, and she hasn't spoken yet, so I'll let her speak, and then I'll let you go, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I think it's the second part that we just added. I think I'm a little bit confused on that piece. I don't have, I don't have any questions with the original motion, but the preparation for materials to be necessary for bond processes, I know that's something that you were talking about, and I was getting water, so I may have missed part of it. Can you kind of speak to that a little bit in terms of what that means?
Go ahead, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes. What this is, is so we've heard tonight that the people of Fairfax County voted in support of a high school in the western side of the county. Not only did they vote in support of it once on a bond, they voted in support of it twice on bonds for the purpose of acquisitions of the land. Our bonding process is essentially a three-step process. And because of challenges we faced, partially because of the economic conditions right around the 2010-2012 period, we did not pursue purchasing at the time that the initial bonding was. Similar to, we've, we've got bonded projects that are still waiting to be done. If we go ahead with this motion tonight, we will be instructing the superintendent and his team to go out and find possible sites and come back to this board with options. We will also, because that process is going to take a period of time, what this does is say, when you come back to us, we also want you to come back to us with what you think needs to go into the bond for the planning process for that high... think needs to go into the bond for the planning process for that high school. And, because if we don't, then we essentially lose more time, we lose two more years. And this was really an effort to respect the will of the voters, twice now, on supporting that activity. And let's go ahead and start thinking not only about the acquisition, but also to be ready, if necessary, to have that bond language ready to go to.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, that's very helpful. The second piece is what Ms. Omeche was talking about. I, I think what you were trying to get at is, how do we collate all the information kind of in one place, the way we have, like, maybe that renovation queue, but instead of a renovation queue, maybe it's a new building queue, so that you have an assessment of what is, what the needs are throughout the entire division? And so there could be an opportunity for school board members to evaluate. Is that what you were intending on saying? Mr. Plattenberg, is that something that is possible to do? Because we do know that there's a lot of unfunded bond, I mean, sorry, bond funds that have not been utilized, but is there a space in our CIP where that request that Ms. Omeche has can live regarding new construction, oops, new construction?
Yeah, I mean, as I stated, the, the cash flow documents that are on pages 48 and 49 of the current CIP, they delineate when we do the phases that Ms. Corbett Sanders was mentioning, and I think the, the comment about clarification and articulation of that component as a part of this process would be healthy for an overall context, and I think, I think that could be done during that, and incorporated as a part of this, as either a footnote or reference, or in some portion we could, or even as an appendix.
Just to be able to have the full scope. Ms. Omeche, is that helpful?
Dr. Anderson, did you?
No, those are my questions, because I, because I know where she's getting at, because in my area, it's also continuous growth, and so, you know, you and I have been having that discussion, Mr. Plattenberg, in terms of how do we get that on the list, so I just wanted to offer some assistance to her question.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I think through Dr. Anderson's, Anderson's questioning, I was able to also clarify how this has already been approved by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no, oh, Mr. Frisch, did you? Okay. Mr. Frisch and Ms. Vikarsky.
So, last year, and I'm speaking from my experience with the bonded project for Fairfax, Oakden, and Shreve Wood, I learned quite a bit about the CIP process for new construction. I also learned that if we were to discover in two years that there was no longer a capacity issue in this region of the county, there is nothing to keep this board from shifting the money to another project that is more deserving. That's what we did in the Dunloring Elementary School case. I would, I cannot imagine, based on the kind of construction that's going on, and the kind of population growth we're seeing in the western part of this county, that anything is going to make us think that there's not a need here anymore. As for the issue of the queue, the queue is not just renovations. The queue is every renovation, new construction project, and the way that they're fit in is based on when is the funding need to happen for each of these things to happen. So a new construction project impacts the queue of renovations just as much as a new renovation impacts the queue for construction projects. And then staff works in the bonding process to lay those things out in an equitable way, so that we are meeting the needs of all of these commitments that we make with our 37-year renovation queue. That's how this project ended up in front of this board. And the issue in this region of the county has only gotten worse over the last 10 years. It has only gotten more dire over the last 10 years. And that is not to say that there are not other problems in the county, it's just that in the way that the queue has been developed and designed over many, 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 many years, in all the things that were considered in developing that queue, this was seen as something of enough importance to be above the other items. And among those qualifications for developing the queue was equity. This is an issue of equity for many schools, and it's not just one region either, so I would just put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vikarsky?
Thank you. I'm going to try to wrap it up, because Ms. Corbett Sanders and Mr. Frisch did such a wonderful job. I do apologize to my colleagues to say it has been a crazy week is really an understatement, which is, it is why we did not have these conversations in detail, although we did, Ms. Cohen and I, bring this up at both of our CIP work sessions this year and last year, so this isn't too much different than what we had shared, we are looking and wanted to do. And, you know, I appreciate the equity issues, this is an equity issue, which is why it's been talked about and put on the queue for over a decade, and I will just say, for the residents and my constituents in the Sully District, every single high schooler in the Sully District attends a school that is grossly over capacity, except for one, that is almost at 100%, and development continues. So I do take that very seriously, but the need is dire, and my constituents have waited a very long time to see some movement on this, so I do appreciate all of you for the grace in, in not having the detailed conversations, which I usually like to do, and in supporting, trying to move forward and get this ball rolling in, in this way. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other board members that want to speak, I will say the motion before us is on the screen. I will call for the vote. All those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. I'll pass the gavel back to Ms. Vikarsky.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I call on Ms. Maron for a follow-on motion.
I move to direct the superintendent to conduct an assessment and report to the board by November 1st, 2022, regarding FCPS facilities' capabilities to support meeting best practices for school nutrition services, which includes in part preparing fresh meals on-site, the status of the addition of daily salad bars in schools, and a recommendation on whether the school division's ed specs will need to be updated to meet school nutrition best practices.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Maron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Briefly, you know, there was a lot of excitement around improving school nutrition before the pandemic, and we've just been in a, put into a very different situation now with school lunch and what's happening, and the matter really just needs more attention. We have advocates who are asking for more, you know, better options, you know, parents, I myself, of having seen the food during the pandemic, our kids need healthier options. So we start with looking at where we're at, getting an assessment of where we're at, and then we can move forward and figuring out what the next steps could be towards making that a reality.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Maron, for partnering with me on this. As we've discussed in our meeting just yesterday with the real food for kids advocates and others, the importance of quality nutritious food for our students has been a longstanding commitment by the school board and FCPS. And initial efforts were actually begun under the leadership of two boards ago. I believe that was Ms. Darnak Kofax and Mr. McElveen, who worked very closely on this effort. Unfortunately, in the course of the past two years, we've not had the focus that we would like on this important issue. Where we were on course to ensure that we had fresh food on, and salad bars in all of our schools, this has been delayed. Efficiencies in food delivery processes have also had an impact. This follow-on motion essentially allows us to get a baseline for where we are on delivering on the commitment of having the best quality and most nutritious possible food for our students, so that we can then build a plan on how we move forward.
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Omeche.
Yes, thank you. As Ms. Corbett Sanders noted, it was during Ms. Darnak Kofax and my first year, our first years on the board, that we started to tackle this issue. In fact, we spent $150,000 on a consultant's report that was incredibly extensive about assessing where we were and where we needed to go with nutrition, nutritional meals in Fairfax County schools. So I absolutely support this follow-on motion. I recognize because this is related to the CIP, and it's a facilities component to it, but I did want to share with my colleagues that I will be working with all of you, that I think we're going to need a budget follow-on motion as well. I'm deeply, deeply worried in talking to families and our advocates, that due to the pandemic, due to the changes, and right now how we are delivering food, using the federal government's offer to give free food to everybody, I just had a parent reach out to me earlier today, saying that their children are being served like Kraft American cheese slices. I mean, it's, we're, you know, Dr. Braybrand, I, I know that your team is stretched to the max. I will say that I am so deeply grateful for our former FNS director, Rodney Taylor, who came with an incredible background in this work, and really helped launch FCPS to a whole nother level of nutritious food. But because of the pandemic and some of the challenges that FNS have had, I, I really am worried, and I think we, as a board, need to have some deeper conversations about the quality of food we're serving. What are the challenges associated with that? Is it funds, because it's a self-sustaining fund? Does it have to do with the fact that we've got a food supply chain problem? But, you know, I'm, again, hearing from staff and students that we are, we have really regressed from where we were pre-pandemic. So while I very much support this, I do hope that we'll all think a little bit more expansively in talking with one another, and, and maybe doing more outreach with our community, because this board has committed so much to equity, and socioeconomic equity is a big component in this county. And while 70% of our families may be in a situation where they can supplement or send their children in with food, at least, at least 30% of our children struggle with that. And if children don't have nutritional food, don't have enough nutritional food, it's going to be extremely hard for them to focus and learn and perform to their best. So I could go on, and I know it's long, so I'm going to stop here, but thank you both for bringing this, and I think we've got a lot more work to do.
Ms. Omeche?
Yeah, happy to follow, Ms. McLaughlin, actually, and thank you to Ms. Maron and Ms. Corbett Sanders for bringing this. Yeah, and not only healthy food, right, but healthy food that is tasty, so that we teach kids good habits, and they're not associating healthy food equals, you know, not tasty. Yeah, so that's part of what we're teaching them, right, as we raise them. So from the facility standpoint in particular, I also think this is a great opportunity for us to consider how facilities can be adjusted or organized in a way that allows for the provision of more inclusive meals that are accommodating of all kinds of kids and staff, so for example, kids with severe allergies, or halal, kosher, vegan, vegetarian, et cetera. So if, if there's no objection, I did want, and I was just speaking to Ms. Corbett Sanders about this, but I did want to suggest if after onsite, we could just add providing meals that are inclusive of diverse student and staff needs. So I should, I should say more formally, I move to amend, hopefully without objection, the language to, as reflected, so that that's also part of the scoping that we do.
Is there any objection to adding this to the motion? Seeing or hearing none?
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You finished, Ms. Omeche?
I suppose, if we could just get clarification from staff that that was, the intent of this was understood.
So, I do have some questions regarding, for me, I need some clarity around the facilities piece for this, for the CIP, and then the programming piece for, when we're talking about best practices. And so I certainly understand the need for it, but I'm, I'm looking for that nexus of the CIP and facilities, so that we can ensure that we are providing versus a follow-up on, on options, and so that's.
I am glad you asked, because the reality is that the way food is prepared, oftentimes, especially in a kosher context, et cetera, does have facilities implications. So I think we might want to revisit that, to just consider if that's been the barrier, because up to today, we still don't have those inclusive options. So I'd like to find out if it's because of facilities barriers or not, and that's something I would like for us to look at.
And it's a report, it's not.
Right, and this would be the report, right, where we explore further what adjustments would be needed.
Thank you for that clarity.
Ms. Kizgimara?
Ms. Omeche, I do appreciate your questions, but I guess I'm trying to understand, I think in your statement, not the words there, but your statement, you, you are saying that the facility, there may be some facility impacts on preparing inclusive types of foods. And so I, I feel as though there's another step, and I'm, I'm not sure it can be addressed here, because I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, honestly, I'm not trying to be offensive at all, but I think that you're asking for an evaluation of what those hindrances could be. Is that correct?
I'd like to get an understanding of our facilities' capabilities, as this outlines, to support meeting best practices for the inclusivity needs of certain populations in food preparation.
Well, the way it's written, the best practices for school nutrition services, which includes in part preparing fresh meals on-site, providing meals that are inclusive of diverse student and staff needs, it sort of sounds like you're asking for a study. Is that correct?
I want an understanding of our facilities' capabilities to do that, right?
But who has the expertise to even determine that?
Well, that's what staff go back to look for, right? The same way that preparing fresh meals on-site. Who has the expertise? I mean.
Well, the reason I'm digging is because it sounds like, for example, you, let's say, you have a particular practice according to a particular culture. Is there anybody on our staff that would understand what that need is? So I, I don't have an objection to what you're trying to achieve, I'm just thinking that there is more needed to get to what you're trying to get to.
Ms. Kizgimara, maybe if we ask our staff if this is something they do have the capability of doing?
So, this is what I'd say. I think, I don't have all of our staff here, I'd like to take this, I'm comfortable with the language. When we go back and we start to run into some of these cultural pieces, if we're not, we can always, I mean, I know Dr. King is not here tonight physically, but we'll have her work with Maria Perone, and, and reach out to students if we need to, to understand some of those things that kids would like to see prepared. But are there things in our infrastructure right now that just doesn't make it possible? Stow space, fridge space, keeping materials separated from each other, and if we have further questions before it comes back, we, we will get back to you guys. And we've got a little bit of time. And I'll make sure, though, before, because I see what this time is, now that I looked one more time, I'll come back to make sure there's no confusion before my tenure ends, even though I know this is a fall deliverable.
I appreciate that. And I think that that addresses the, I don't want to have expectations, right? I can see us sitting in a work session and saying, but we expect a X, Y, Z. And so perhaps what we're talking about is an interim report, Dr. Braybrand, that lets us know where we are in our ability to assess what she's asking.
Yeah, I can do that. I, I'll provide some sort of update through the Braybrand briefing or a Monday letter, before June 30th, so that this is, is set for success in November, and there's no, oh my God, this is not what we wanted at all.
I don't want us to have assumptions that information or structure is there, that may not be there. So that's the reason for my questioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kizgimara. Next, we have Ms. Darnak Kofax, followed by Ms. Tolan.
So, thank you to the makers of this motion.
So I thank you to the makers of this motion. Can we move back to it one more time, please? Thank you. I do appreciate the recognition that this was something that was started long ago, like you said, two boards ago, Karen, and something that we made great strides on. And then it kind of, kind of stopped a little bit because we did lose the head that one, we lost Rodney for our food and nutritionists and then, you know, and then the pandemic came. So there's lots of things that we did in the past that I think we need to do again. We were very close to talking about scratch kitchens. We were talking about things that we, I'm sorry, what? Oh, I thought somebody said something. So things, things that we have not moved on. I mean, we got salad bars in all the schools and that was, that was quite an undertaking, actually, considering where we were. I remember kids like, that was the, that was my big claim to fame when my kids were in middle school or high school. They were like, Mom, you got, you know, salad bars. That was a big deal. Believe me, it seems like nothing now. But when they weren't there and you were getting canned peaches and now you've got fresh strawberries, it was a big deal. So anyway, I digress and the hour is late. So I will be, I will be supporting this. I think we do need to move. I do want to make one thing, and Ms. McLaughlin, I'm glad you raised that about the quality of what is happening, but that is with the federal program. And those changes have happened, I mean, when, and they were different administrations ago. There was a huge push under the Obama administration for these, these higher quality food, better foods. And then the next administration came in and those, all of those were wiped out, they were taken away. So I think, I mean, in any way that I can, I just had, I'll report out on what I did with the federal legislative liaisons, but one thing I want to do say is, Ms. Burden is not here. Dr. Braybrand, I don't know if you have this at the top of your-
Ms. Burden is online.
Oh, but I don't know if you have this at the top of your head, but she gave me, because part of my advocacy when I, when I spoke to Senator Kane, Senator Warner, and the staffs of the other congresspeople, was about how many more people now are eating our lunches as a result of-
Way up.
Way up. Do you have those numbers at the top?
I don't have it at the top, but it's significant. I'd say 30 to 40%. The other thing, I want to give you some good news, two good pieces of news, if I could just, with permission, Ms. Darnett Kofax answered that question?
Yes, yes, please.
And we can let Ms. Burden add anything as well. She was on a call today with me with Congressman Jerry Connolly, along with the superintendent of Prince William-
Okay.
And Chairman Pakarski and the Chair, Prince William. And we're going to work with Congressman Connolly to extend as much as we can the USDA program so that our kids can continue. We're working on it, it's not done. The other is, just in the last week, the administration, the Biden administration has said they are restoring the food nutrition guideline standards that were relaxed. So I think you are going to see some changes based on that restoration of standards.
I think that's, I think that's very important because I hope this isn't, and I say this not snarkily, but I, I hope it's not, you get what you pay for. So we want, we want nutritious program, nutritious food for our kids. We are grateful that we have this program that allows those who may not have identified as FRM or were embarrassed to identify as FRM are now getting fed through our system. But we want it to be healthy. We want it to be where we were going. So I appreciate you working with them. As I said, I, I spent some time talking about it as a, as an advocacy group. So I'll be supporting this and thank you.
And if I may, I'd like to share that that innovative spirit is still alive and well in food nutrition services. Pre-COVID, we were putting in one new salad bar per week and then COVID hit and of course we know what occurred then. Many of the issues that we're experiencing now, we did provide an update to the board, but many of the, the food issues that we're experiencing are really due to supply chain issues that we're experiencing across the country. And so I, I don't want the board to walk away this evening feeling that our commitment to good food for kids is any different than it was pre-pandemic. And I do want to do a shout out to our food nutrition services staff for being able to do the yeoman's work that they have done. And I know that, that you all feel the same way, but I, I certainly feel that I wanted to share that because the commitment is still there, the innovation is still there, and being able to provide that information to the board, we certainly feel that that will help you be able to make some decisions in the next CIP.
My comments were not intended to at all disparage anyone in that programming, Dr., Mr. Smith. So I apologize if they were, if they were heard that way, but that was not my intent.
No, no, and I didn't take them that way. I did not take them that way at all.
Ms. Tolan?
I'm happy to follow Mr. Smith with those comments. You know, I, I think our, our food and nutrition services staff have done an incredible job of working through the COVID period. What I did want to say though, around this motion, is that I was very fortunate to have worked for years with Real Food For Kids. I know they've been meeting with many of us and, you know, Maggie McLaughlin, and I met with them yesterday. Also, we worked with them to expand healthy food and salad bars in our, across our cafeterias. And I was going to mention, you know, Rodney Taylor, our previous FNS director, hired some very good and some very innovative personnel. So I'm hoping that as we move forward with this research, that we'll tap into those people for some creative problem solving, you know, how we can move forward out of COVID, even if we are getting some support from the federal government with food, how do we start to make our meals, you know, just more interesting, more nutritious for our students? We had done incredible work with the food lines in, during the time of the renovation of Marshall High School and then schools that were renovated subsequently to that had incredible variation in the, in the lunch lines and the food that was available. I also, I know this motion, I have to say this, I know this motion is about food and nutritious food, but we also did so much work with our food and nutrition staff, our facility staff, our instructional staff, to make our cafeterias and our kitchens as energy efficient and waste-free as possible. And believe me, those cafeterias have incredible waste streams, especially if you've been into one of those huge high schools during lunchtime. So, you know, really being innovative and working with this ties in with our jet goals and, you know, working towards zero waste and energy efficiency as well. So it all fits together. I'll be happy, happy to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Ismar Heiser?
Thank you. I, just a quick question, I don't know if this is for Ms. Sobash, as the language you added, or maybe just for our staff, but when we talk about inclusive of diverse student and staff needs, I'm assuming we're including students with allergies and food allergies in that?
Oh, I said that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I thought I'd heard it, but I wasn't sure. But yeah, I wanted to, because that I think is really important. And that actually does have a facilities impact because sometimes food preparation itself can, you know, and food contamination in preparation. So I see Mr. Plattenberg nodding. I don't know if he wanted to say anything. I just wanted to put that out there to make sure that was understood. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, just quickly, because, you know, Dr. Braybrand, you were saying your excitement in working with Congressman Connolly and extending the USDA's, you know, partnership and all this, but, you know, it's late hour, but I want to just put this little, plant the seed for our board and for you to take into consideration, because our food nutritional services is a grant-funded program, it is a self-sustaining fund, one of the things I remember during the pandemic that Ms. Burden, our CFO, told us is that about 50% of our operating funds that help pay for the food, that help pay for the, the workers and their benefits, comes from our paid lunches and meals because the federal government's compensation rate is so much lower. So I really do want to just make sure everybody's being very mindful that we're going to continue to struggle in our desire to bring us back to where we were pre-pandemic. If we don't solve the, the financial challenges of you can't get good food with good workers if it's only going to be on the federal government reimbursement on a self-sustaining fund. So I think there's going to be a very big financial component attached to this work. And that's why I, I will be bringing a budget follow-on motion in a couple of weeks because I think it will partner and complement this here tonight. And even though I know we've had a very broad conversation, I really welcomed it because I think there's a lot here beyond just the facilities.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I think, oh, Dr. Anderson, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
I've been patiently waiting. My light's been on. I'm glad that you brought that up, Ms. McLaughlin. And Mr. Smith, I'm not sure if you're aware, because I did raise this question to Ms. Burden quite a bit ago, and I thought her response was that if we were to serve, I believe was, the number was around 100,000 meals, then it would not be a deficit to the, to the operating budget?
So we're-
Even under the federal program?
So the federal program, they've actually just raised those reimbursement rates. They've raised the reimbursement rates to school systems this year. And I do know that Ms. Burden is on the, the meeting and could certainly, is wanting to weigh in here.
Ms. Burden?
Yes, Mr. Smith is absolutely right. They have raised the federal reimbursement rate during the pandemic. The solvency of the Food Services Fund is very good right now, which is different from what it was when we last reported on that. At that time, we were offering pay continuity at the very beginning of the pandemic and, but at that point, we weren't serving any, any meals. So we had no reimbursement or, or any paid meals. But the federal reimbursement at this point is certainly adequate to be able to fund the program at this point in time. And that is largely due to the fact that pre-pandemic, we were serving about 110,000 breakfasts and lunches every single day. And we regularly serve over 150,000 currently. And some days, on Fridays, when they have pizza, it has reached 170,000.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And is, given the increase in the reimbursement rate, what is the number of meals that would be cost neutral daily?
We are rebuilding our fund balance. The state recommends that we have three months of food service operating expenses in the fund balance. That fund balance was completely eliminated at the beginning of the pandemic. And you may recall that we had to provide a supplement from the operating fund, and that is not the case anymore.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any kitchens that prepare schools, meals from scratch? Do we have any? Or are they all a little bit more ready to serve? Does any-
No, they're, they're, they're all fresh. Our, our food is the same products that are prepared fresh daily, but we do, our current model utilizes central kitchens for food preparation, but it, but we do have fewer options because of the supply chain issues. And of course, you know, as Mr. Smith mentioned, no salad bars.
Okay, thank you. The other thing that I'd like to add, going back now to the, to the motion that was presented, is I hope that there's space for evaluation of portion sizes because that's become a real issue with our middle schoolers and our high schoolers who are given portions that are not able to sustain them throughout the day. And so I hope that that can be part of this conversation. And particularly, and you know, to also pivot on, in what some, with some of the things that Ms. Sobash has said, for some of our kids, that's their main meal of the day. You know, some of our kids really rely on that nutrition and not having enough of it. No matter what the quality is, not having enough of it is also an additional issue. So I, I would want to be sure that portion sizes is part of this study. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the motion is on the screen before us. All those in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. I will now call on Ms. Tolan for the last follow-on motion.
I move to direct the superintendent to include and implement a plan for the additional $32.9 million that may become available from the state for facilities projects. The plan is needed so that work can begin immediately upon receipt of the funds in July 2022. The plan should include work on safety concerns, bringing older facilities up to the current educational specifications, to include but not be limited to privacy in bathrooms, provision of outdoor classroom spaces, and spaces needed to enhance the health and wellness of our students and staff.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, please. Mainly, I would like to thank our students for their advocacy for improvements to their school buildings. I especially wanted to thank the young men from Hickley High School that have clearly talked about the, the old bathrooms and the lack of privacy. It is for them and other students in our buildings that I feel the need to bring forward this follow-on motion. And interestingly, today, I was at Cooper Middle School taking a look at the, the renovation that's in process there right now. They've got two sets of bathrooms that have been newly completed and administration was telling me that they're seeing students walk from one end of the building to the other in order to be able to use the new bathrooms because the other bathrooms are so old. So, you know, that's just one of the needs that's listed in this motion. You know, security, improvements of wellness spaces are listed in there too. I would like to note that through the work of Ms. Sobash, for the first time in our CIP, we do have a list of these wellness and per spaces, privacy spaces that have been added to page, I think it's 242. So thank you for all of that, those efforts. We have also seen schools with increased interest in outdoor learning spaces during COVID, to have our children learning in the most healthy environment possible and in an environment shown to assist children to recover from traumas and difficult transitions such as those they've experienced with the pandemic. The wording of this motion is very broad to purposely allow our facility staff to have leeway in determining the priority use of, of these funds that we really hope that we will be getting from the state. And I do want to thank Mr. Plattenberg and his staff for helping us with the wording of the motion.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Tolan, for working with me on this important follow-on motion. We know that the state funding is in flux. However, there is an indication that there will be increased funding for these type of building improvements. With a renovation cycle of over 37 years and recent increases in bond funding, these are largely offset by increased material and labor cost. We know that many of our buildings are not up to the standard that we expect for Fairfax students, the FCPS promise. These necessary improvements are often postponed or funded by generous parent groups and boosters, which creates a challenge for equity. When this happens, the FCPS promise of a great environment for learning is not realized by all students throughout the county. These delays have resulted in faulty bathrooms, a limited number of outdoor learning spaces, and vestibules at some schools, but not all. This follow-on motion is a great way of ensuring that we develop a plan and work that plan to improve our buildings as effectively as possible when we get new infusions of funds such as this potential from the state. So thank you again, Ms. Tolan, for allowing me to work with you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Mr. Plattenberg, sorry to call on you real quick. So I, I know that this is a, you know, our board and the system very much wants to get to 21st century, you know, healthy learning, advanced learning, and as someone who grew up in beautiful- learning, advanced learning. And as someone who grew up in beautiful sunny California, outdoor learning is, to me, a dream. But one of the things I feel like we've not been having our conversations about is, as we push in that direction of outdoor learning, and especially when we were in the pandemic, and that was just such a crucial component of really taking advantage of being outdoors, I feel like we still haven't married the conversation about our indoor facilities. And as we've known, a major backlog and major maintenance, as Ms. Corbett Sanders is talking about, our use of trailers and cottages or whatever, you know, terminology we want to use for that. And so in this motion here, are we helping your team to be able to holistically bring us a plan that says, look, like everything we do, there are these competing needs and areas of focus? Because I know for so long, multiple boards have talked about children and teachers being in trailer spaces, and that is not what we want for a premier, you know, educational experience in Fairfax County. And so while outdoor learning is a component of that, I feel like it can't be in a vacuum that we're having that conversation. So could you maybe speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, you said it best. It's a matter of competing needs, and we have so many. We could go on and on about the major maintenance, the requirement of how backlogged we are in the funding. The CARES Act funding has done an amazing job of helping us with a lot of our HVAC. It's good, it's a nice shot in the arm. The increase of the bond that's been talked about has been huge momentum since I've been here. Not only do we get 13.5 shifted that was in bond, that's now capacity and 25 million early on. In addition to that 38 million, we now have the additional 50, historical proportions from back when I was managing the cash flow and the bond referendums back in the 80s, which really just dated myself. So anyway, but the reality of this is, I see this as providing for some of the things that the school board has been desiring to get accomplished and addressed, to include security vestibules. Because when we talk about enhance the health and wellness of our students and staff, it is consistent with what was recommended by this body at the work session to partition off as part of the CIP. And I think this codifies that. In the event that the governor does sign off on this funding, it provides a funding stream for the partitioning that the school board collectively had asked during the last work session on the CIP.
Well, since you brought up the security vestibules as just, you know, another facility need that we're thinking about, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I didn't hear it mentioned, but our stadium bathrooms. You know, I mean, the 32 million or almost $33 million, as you know, there's multiple conversations occurring with the board supervisors and, you know, individual school board members and facilities about the fact that, you know, having stadium bathrooms impacts our students when they're out in the school day for PE. It impacts our athletes. It impacts our band. It impacts our youth and adult sports leagues that use our facilities, the taxpayers and residents on the off hours. So is that something that would be in consideration with these $33 million? I mean, that is a facilities component?
Well, I would take into consideration anything that's a priority of the board, and that would be incorporated in each, in the annual CIP as to what we, what we're focused on. And the short answer is yes, it would. However, many of your colleagues, I know Ms. Corbett Sanders and many of you, have been working with the board of supervisors and with the delegation on looking at creative ways to gain funding for exactly what you mentioned, the stadium bathrooms, much like your work with the joint task force on artificial turf. So those partnerships will continue to go well, but this I do see as a revenue source to hopefully supplement some of those needs.
And Ms., I'm sorry, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Ms.
Yeah, you're part of the motion maker, so.
So if you read this, it's really to develop a plan and then implement it. Obviously, that plan would be brought back to this board. But I would suggest that there's the 32.9 million that we're talking about. And then there's an additional, and I'm going to get the exact number wrong, I'm sure, but it's over 5 million, which is also in play for the installation of the actual utilities for each of the fields in the, that currently don't have bathrooms. And so that is also, I would, ideally, if both get passed, then we could ask you to include a more holistic approach to it. But it really is, that piece on the stadium bathrooms, as you know, you participated in a conversation with facility staff and our colleagues on the board. That's, there's some optimism about where we're going on that, but we still need additional information. So that planning process that we're asking here could include that, once we have a better idea. And as you see, it's really whether we get that money or not. I mean, this is, this is money that was not expected with the CIP. So this does create a structured process for figuring out how to do that.
Sure. I just, I wanted to elevate this because Chairman McKay and Supervisor Dan Stork, as you know, have expressed interest in this as a joint effort in equity. And so I think that, given the conversation tonight, I wanted to elevate that for all 12 board members to understand that, that, you know, this has been some initial conversation, but understanding that if the board supervisors do end up through the advocacy in our community, you know, our athletic boosters at all of our high schools are saying that rather than the school system spending over seven, the athletic boosters are spending $7,000 per high school every year to pay for the porta potties. And so it's just money that's being literally dumped down the drain. Yeah, flushed, flushed. Thank you, Ms. Kees Gamar. Literally being flushed. So anyway, you know, I did want to, I did want to make sure that that would be something that as they're developing the plan, and because this is something that we're looking at partnering with board supervisors, anything we can share and get something done quickly. There's, this has been a long time coming, and I just want to add, the Fairfax County Athletic Council, for which I'm also the liaison, they're very excited about work in this arena. So there you go.
I think we have to thank Mr. Plattenberg and his staff for coming with some innovative solutions to help us get there. So thank you.
Okay. And with that, the motion's on the screen. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Almost there.
Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, sorry, Agenda Item 5, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda Item 6, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business items are on the screen.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7, Board Committee Reports. I'll call on Mr. Frisch for a Public Engagement Committee update, Ms. Kees Gamar for a report on the Comprehensive Planning Development Committee, and Ms. Darnak Kofax, our federal legislative liaison, for a report on lobbying day.
The Public Engagement Committee met earlier this month, literally earlier this month, last week. And we received an extensive presentation from OCCR about our strategic communications goals and our progress towards achieving those. And they will be reaching out to board members who are not on the Public Engagement Committee to set up two by twos and go over the presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The CPDC committee met, I think it was yesterday. Was it yesterday? Tuesday. Okay. And we had two subjects on the calendar. One had to do with proffers and student yield ratios. Ms. Tolan already mentioned this, but as the county begins to consider possible changes to the formula, our committee was allowed to give input. CPDC asked staff to bring a recommendation for us to review, which will then be submitted to the full board. We wanted to make sure that it included equity concerns and recommendations that would not, would be, having a positive impact on areas while allowing support for our schools. We are following up with the county and others regarding the implications for mobile home communities, which had not, according to the process, we couldn't tell exactly how it would be handled. So we asked staff to make a recommendation and to bring that to us so that we could then have a review of it with the board before it was actually submitted to the board of supervisors. The second agenda item had to do with a report on the Planning Commission Schools Committee that Ms. Omeche and I attended a week or so ago. What we learned was that the county has made changes to the process of how we deal with 2232 and some other types of development, where previously it has been on the consent agenda. It will no longer be on the consent agenda, which means it will have a hearing, which means it requires a whole lot of other stuff, including communications. And so we are in the process of working with FPAC, who I am so grateful is full of wonderful citizens that can give us some possible guidelines on how best to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And on February 1st, I was honored to be part of VSBA's Federal Advocacy Day, where I joined with fellow school board members from around the state to meet with our federal legislators. We were able to meet with the staffs of Don Byer, Jennifer Weckston, and Jerry Conley, and we had the pleasure of meeting directly with Senators Tim Kaine and Mark Warner. We talked about a lot of what we're talking about tonight, but presented them with the issues, including what we talked about, the USDA lunch program, our staffing shortages with teachers, bus drivers, and other staff members, student achievement data, IDEA funding, school modernization, Title I funding, and much more. So it was a full day, but you felt very empowered to be able to talk to the legislators, particularly those, the senators we were able to talk to directly, who were very engaged and asking very direct questions and from each of us about what we're seeing in our districts. There is a lot of commonality across Virginia, as our needs are often the same and our struggles are the same. So it was a great day, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend.
Thank you. Agenda Item 8, Board Matters. I will now call on Ms. Cohen.
No, it's awfully late. I'm going to skip tonight.
Ms. Darnak Kofax, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Well, I'm just going to keep it light tonight, as the hour is late. On Friday, I'll talk about the arts. February 11th, Hayfield Secondary will present Mr. Burns' post-electric play. And Edison has one act on Tuesday, February 15th. That was a makeup day from earlier. There will be concerts at Mount Vernon High School on February 16th at 7:00 PM. And that will be the school band concert. And the orchestra concert will be on the 24th. I want to give a shout out to FCPS graduate Nick Scott, who will be playing Safety for the Rams at this year's Super Bowl. How very exciting. He is an alumni of Penn State. We are. So we are, and go Rams.
Thank you. So last week, as we began Black History Month, the school board and the board of supervisors announced the launch of the Joint Fairfax County Historical Marker Project. I was grateful to have collaborated on this effort over many months with my school board colleagues, especially early on with Dr. Anderson during her time as chair. I'm also grateful for Providence District Supervisor Dahlia Palchek, who brought this idea to us, Chairman Jeff McKay, and Supervisors Rodney Lusk and Kathy Smith, who worked closely with her on the county side, and of course, the incredible county and school division staff and community members who worked through the details and did the heavy lifting to make this possible. The purpose of the project is to bring attention to untold and lesser known histories from Fairfax County communities. The rich history, culture, and accomplishments of these communities are often underrepresented in history books and school curriculum. And to that end, the inaugural focus of this project in Fairfax County's black and African American communities, it will expand to future years to include other underrepresented histories as well. FCPS will provide resources to support students in grades four through 12, as they research untold local stories of black African Americans and groups who have impacted our community. The Historical Marker Project will be available to all teachers. All K through 12 students residing in Fairfax County can suggest topics for new historical markers throughout anywhere in the county. Students can access resources to assist with their research on the FCPS website. And as Ms. Corbett Sanders indicated earlier this evening, this is not the first time FCPS students have worked together to secure historical markers for the community. In 2020, students from Laurel Ridge Elementary School, with help from school-based technology specialist Maurekini, successfully petitioned for a roadside marker dedicated to own a judge, a woman born into slavery at George Washington's Mount Vernon. The students' efforts resulted in the marker being erected in June of 2021, very close to the estate. And just last year, Governor Ralph Northam's Black History Month Historical Marker Contest selected three suggestions from the Kings Glen Elementary School History Hunters and History Markers Club, another effort organized by Ms. Keeney. To be clear, my path first crossed with Ms. Keeney nearly 20 years ago, and she will be the first to tell you that it was the students who deserve all of the credit here. But I do not want to minimize her early conversations with Supervisor Palchek, which helped chart a course for this project. And for that, we are extremely grateful. If you are interested in taking part in this project, please visit the FCPS website for more information and talk to your teacher. I can't wait to hear about all of the stories that students uncover in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Kees Gamar.
Also, keep it brief because it is late. Dr. Brabran, I just wanted to kind of put a fine point on something that many board members got communication on today. And I did speak with our Director of Communications, Ms. Lloyd, and she's very sensitive to how important it is that we get some clarity for our community on the recent RFP that has to do with a social media consultant. You know, it's so important that we provide that kind of factual information to our families, because the way it's being read by some and the inquiries coming in, the concern is that it has to do with parents being on social media and, you know, remarks they may make. And so I just really wanted to take this opportunity, because I know the 12 of us and you have the deepest respect for our role to listen carefully and respectfully to our community. That is not what this RFP is about at all. It's my understanding it originated with the Office of Safety Security. When we look at what happened in Michigan, when school administrators were faced with communication from students, students were seeing things online, that we want to just help ensure that we have the most holistic approach to, when you read something, see something, say something, to save lives. And so I just wanted to give you this moment to maybe add to anything else that I've said, but I just think it's so important that we take that right off the table. This is about helping kids.
Absolutely. I'll just say super quick, we know that the media out there takes things and twists facts into fiction. The fact is, that work is around student safety. We know social media has become part of the threats that we've seen from student to student. We've talked about it as we've done the SRNR each year. And this is part of our proactive ability to begin to really work and monitor things that we see on social media that could be seen as threats to schools, to the staff that serve them, and to students. And we'll work to get some additional communication out, so there's not confusion in our community for the purposes of that.
That's great. And I know that our families don't realize sometimes, but we've had schools closed because of threats. And that disrupts learning for the students. It disrupts it for our working families. So all of this- So all of this is within the best of intentions to really help support our community, and so I appreciate your team's efforts to quickly bring that information to the table. I was really disappointed in that news report alone that did not show good journalism, and I will even elevate their story by naming them.
Thank you, Megan. I had wanted to comment on that privately, but that's, I mean, I think you needed to, that needed to be said. Guys, I've talked a lot tonight. I feel like I took up my lion's share in talking about Black History Month. I had a lot to say, and I needed to say it to my colleagues who stand on the front line with me. So I do want to just thank the folks that came out for the resolution today. But I do have one other thing I think is important for me to share, and this has to do with a letter from a constituent who has a second grader, and apparently, there's this game out there where they sort of live out a type of online game, but they're doing it on the playground. And they identify other kids to chase down, and they have to sit on them for a period of 20 seconds. This young man, the staff handled it well, but she contacted me in hopes that I would mention it, because this young man was the recipient of this behavior, and he said that he was afraid and he felt like George Floyd. So I am saying this so that parents have an opportunity to realize that there may be some unintended consequences of things that we would think are play, and we may want to have conversations with our children about the actions, what our actions can produce in other children. I call it the do unto others golden rule kind of conversation, and I know parents know their students, their children better than we do, but I wanted to make them aware that we believe that this may be part of the TikTok trend, and so I think it's worthy of some conversation at home, and I wanted to give parents an opportunity to discuss that as we all work toward a caring culture. I want to thank all of my colleagues for your patience with me tonight, and happy Black History Month.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Omech.
Yes, I was happy to support our resolution tonight for Black History Month, and I'm happy to see so many activities across FCPS to celebrate. I do want to thank my colleagues, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Kizgamar, for their incredible and thoughtful comments. To celebrate Black History Month, there are some amazing student and family programs that I just wanted to let people know about at the Smithsonian museums. And if you haven't been to the McLean Community Center, they still have their virtual reality exhibits on Traveling While Black, just, I think, through the weekend. So I encourage you to take a little time to see that. It was, it's excellent. I'm excited. If you recall, at our last meeting, we celebrated our counselors, and it is actually National School Counseling Week this week. And the time I've spent with counselors across the schools, they're always amazing, and they do amazing things for our students. But in particular, our McLean High School's Kathleen O'Tall recently attended the National School Counseling Association Awards Gala and was honored for being named the Virginia School Counselor of the Year. So congratulations to Kathleen. This week is also School Crossing Guard Appreciation Week, with yesterday's School Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. That was yesterday. Thank you to all of our crossing guards and school staff that work to keep our students, families, and staff safe at our busy drop-off and pickup times near our schools. I just have to make a statement, please, I know we have, our kids and ride lines are much longer than usual with COVID, and I just want to encourage all of our parents, please, take your time and be respectful of all laws and of neighbors when you drop off or pick up your students, or having issues at a number of schools. And I've heard many, many requests from constituents for better driving behavior around schools and school buses. Please, as I said, be patient and respectful. There have been some unfortunate accidents and close calls at our schools, so please follow traffic laws as you are dropping off and picking up students. A couple of exciting things in Drainsville. Herndon Middle School received a Healthy Kids Grant from the Community Foundation and held a virtual cooking class with 50 of the middle school students participating in a two-hour cooking class led by a chef. The kids all received a cooking and baking set ahead of time, and parents purchased all of the ingredients. The students were super engaged in making those healthy snacks. Langley High School alumni Lucy Chen and Anam Khan founded Codify, a McLean-based organization that teaches coding to middle and high school students worldwide. Codify just received a Governor's Voluntarism and Community Service Award in November. About 250 high school and college-age volunteers from all over the country help mentor students and teach coding courses online. And also, just our middle school and high school students have been so busy. Congratulations to the musicians who have made it to the district level, bands, chorus, or orchestra levels, and they're all gearing up for yearly assessments and are having pre-assessment concerts. And check your local high school and middle school calendars for these fabulous events. And be sure to check out all of the drama productions. It's the season for student-written one-act plays, which are always incredible. And congratulations to many of our Drainsville Regional Scholastic Arts and Writing winners moving on to the national competition. And congratulations to our winter athletes. I know there was a, we had wrestling regionals occurring today, so congratulations to all of our wrestlers that participated in that. And I wish the best of luck to all of our winter athletes in their regional and state competitions, and good luck to everyone trying out for spring sports.
Yeah, I'll go. Today, I had the pleasure of meeting with our region staff to look for, and I look forward to problem-solving around student achievement and socio-emotional learning about how we can continue supporting them. I also had the pleasure of going with Ms. Cohen and a number of our staff to celebrate the new principal at Fairfax High School just this past Friday, with the City of Fairfax Board and Dr. Pajardo, the superintendent, which we're all excited about Ms. A. joining that school community later in the year. Yesterday, I also had the pleasure of co-hosting with Pranav, our student rep, a community forum where we discussed the latest updates on budgets, CIP, and tried to break it down in the simplest way possible for the community. So be sure to check that out if you are interested in what we've been doing for the past two months. I shared earlier that I did want to give the floor mostly to Ms. Kizgamar and Dr. Anderson on African-American History Month, but of course, happy African-American History Month to everyone, and I certainly wanted to comment because I know a chunk of the resolution was spent celebrating the many contributions of the community over the years. To just state that, you know, regardless, of course, of the many contributions which are significant and make us proud, the worth of every member of our community stands alone and is valuable in and of itself, intrinsically and inherently. With that, I did want to share a quote from one of my role models from African-American History Month. I shared this, who he was last time, and I think many of you know, Malcolm X, who was a minister and human rights activist during the Civil Rights Movement and who challenged us to decolonize our minds. If that's a foreign phrase for you, I encourage you to look it up, but here it goes. So he says, "Why am I as I am? To understand that of any person, his whole life from birth must be reviewed. All of our experiences fuse into our personality. Everything that ever happened to us is an ingredient. Don't be in a hurry to condemn because he doesn't do what you do, or think as you think, or as fast. There was a time when you didn't know what you know today. We need more light about each other. Light creates understanding. Understanding creates love. Love creates patience, and patience creates unity." So that's the end of the quote, but to shed some of that light, hopefully, and build towards some understanding, Pranav and I are going to be co-hosting a conversation about Jedi initiatives, Jedi being justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives, specifically addressing the topic of, yeah, it's coming, critical race theory. What is it? Let's learn a little bit more about it. We're gonna, we'll have some national experts join us on the 23rd for a virtual conversation and answering the community's questions with the goal, again, of bringing understanding by shedding light on what I think has been severely misunderstood, which makes me end tonight with a final quote from Malcolm X, which is, "A man who stands for nothing will fall for anything. I'm for truth, no matter who tells it. I'm for justice, no matter who it is for or against. I'm a human being first and foremost, and as such, I'm for whoever and whatever benefits humanity as a whole." Good night.
Ms. Maron, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Hi, yeah, just four quick things. So I was able to be over at Willow Oaks today to review the potential, the language arts basal resources that are on display for anyone to come and check them out, and I was really encouraged by what I saw. There's a set from Benchmark Education that had K through six, and I flipped through and saw phonics-based instruction and content knowledge and culturally appropriate content, and so I'm really looking forward to seeing what our committee of appointed members of the public, you know, put together and hear those recommendations. Next week, I'm looking forward to connecting with the communities at Flores Elementary and Aldrin Elementary for, when I go over for a site visit and a PTA meeting. And next week also, calling all high school students, there's going to be an amazing career expo. It starts on Monday, February 14th, and runs through Thursday, the 17th. It's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. It's called Instruction to Industry, so instruction, the number two, industry, and it's in partnership with six other area school divisions. FCPS is the lead, and a shout out to Matt Bechtel for all his work in convening that and convening about 100 different industry partners from lots of different career paths. So do check it out, preregister if you can, so everyone knows that you're coming. So again, it's Instruction to Industry, and you could probably search it on the website, or I've been putting it on social media as well. And then also next week, on the 17th at 7:00 PM, I'm hosting an Outdoor Learning Spaces Community Conversation, and I'm really excited to have so many people sign up in advance and even share some photos of what's happening in their school community, so I hope to have another conversation online in the next month, and then actually get out to some schools and see what's happening and what can be inspiring that we could do, you know, particularly for parents and students and in partnership with the staff. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Actually, before I have my remarks, I would like Ms. Maron to also talk a little bit about the CTE virtual event that's coming up. I know that you had wanted to make sure that all of your colleagues knew about it, but this is a great opportunity for you to share.
Oh, yes, that was what I just mentioned. That was the Instruction to Industry. That was, it's all virtual.
Excellent, thank you.
14th, 17th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Thanks, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Great. So I had the pleasure of partnering with my colleague, Dr. Anderson, earlier on a panel discussion on the IB reaccreditation for the district, and I just really appreciated the comments that you brought to the table as an experienced educator, and really, the discussion with the IB Association was really about how Fairfax County is leading in this area, how we can improve the availability of IB programming, and more importantly, the recognition within the community about IB so that kids are encouraged to join it. And I know that the IB programs have been very successful. Ms. Darnak Kofax has two children that graduated, having had excellent experience with the IB program at Edison, and we have, over time, expanded those programming to the middle-years IB program. And so this was, and as a matter of fact, I think you, Ms. Omech, are also a product of our IB programs. And so the more that we can hold up or lift up people that have had these great experiences and the value of the IB program for our students, I think it's the better. I also wanted to thank you personally, Dr. Braybrand. I know that we all woke up on Sunday morning with a significant number of students who had reached out to us about their concerns on the forthcoming World Championships for Color Guard, Drum Line, and Percussion, that usually take place in Dayton, Ohio, and there were some contracting problems to make sure that those kids would be able to participate. So I very much appreciate your focus on that. Thank you. Wanted to let people know that TJ High School for Science and Technology continues to be a great place for our students to thrive, and that we have two students from TJ participating in the Senate, the 2022 Senate Youth Program, and another student partnering with a student in one of our private schools in the area, has been recognized for the Regeneron Science Talent Search, which, there are only 40 finalists across the country, so just another great example of the wonderful education our students get here in Fairfax County. And finally, I wanted to actually ask for your assistance, Mr. Frisch, in, because I know that you built on the programs at the state level and the wonderful work that Ms. Keeney was doing, has done on the historical markers, and the thing that we haven't done is we haven't formally recognized those students who really profiled and inspired so much of the work that is now being done at the local level. And so Ms. Keeney has reached out asking, and I said that I would work with my colleagues to make sure that we find an opportunity to bring those students here and recognize the great work they've done, not only in Fairfax County but across the state, raising awareness to them. Please do.
I spoke to her a couple nights ago and suggested that a resolution might be in order, so I'd be happy to partner with you on that.
Wonderful. We'll make that happen.
Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Seismarizer.
All righty, thank you. I'll try to be really quick because it is really late, but I did want to highlight and thank the two schools that I visited last week, North Springfield and Mason Crest. It's always fantastic to be able to see the wonderful things going on in our schools and the efforts by our staff. I do want to share, though, Dr. Braybrand, something that has come up with many of the schools that I've visited, the elementary schools. There's a lot of concern from the principals regarding staff, special education staffing, the mini-model, I think that they typically would have had access to, does not seem to be available, so they're a little bit worried about that staffing, so I would love your follow-up on that. And also staffing for self-contained programs, they're just very concerned that they won't have the personnel that they need to support our students. Spent quite a bit of time at Falls Church last week, and we had a wonderful renovation community update, and I think at one point, Mr. Frisch, who was also there, we had 138 participants. So it was quite, and Ms. Kizgamar was also there. So we had quite a robust discussion with the community, and the excitement is so high because that school has not been renovated in so many, many years, decades, and so they're waiting with bated breath. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the Falls Church High School Boys and Girls Basketball Games, and in between the two games, there was the gym dedication for Ms. Jean Kelly, who we remember, we had the renaming decision be made here last October, and it was fantastic. It was so touching. She had the most rising ovation from her community, and I was very glad to be there, even though I got a lot of flack for wearing a Justice shirt over, under my Falls Church jacket, but I had to do double duty. I attended the Mountain View Winter Commencement last week, and it was just fantastic to see the work of those students. They have some difficult circumstances, and being able to overcome and thrive, they're not just getting through, they are thriving with high levels of GPAs going into schools that are prestigious. I was just very excited to be there, so thank you to Mountain View for allowing me to participate. And yesterday, I was at the Plum Center. Our ACE Committee, Mr. Balwena, put together a tour of the ACE facility at the Plum Center in Edsall, where we had an opportunity to see firsthand the adult ESOL classes, the ACE classes. the adult ESOL classes, the ACE classes, and the adult education classes. And it was really fantastic. I don't want to spend too much time to talk about it here, but there was a lot that I've learned, and I'm really looking forward to being able to better support as liaison to ACE based on that visit. There were some very wonderful things. Just a quick reminder to Mason community, to the Mason community, February 15th, I will have office hours at Columbia Elementary from 6:30 to 8:00. Looking forward to see you there. And on the 17th, at the Mason Government Center from 10:00 to noon. And virtual, a virtual option will be on February 28th. Again, thank you all for indulging me as well with my comments of Black History Month. I appreciate your support. Happy Black History Month, and also Happy Valentine's Day that is coming up on Monday. Good night.
I will try to be brief. This is a couple of things I really want to share this week. First, it's a big week for Fairfax High. I would love to say congratulations to Nick Scott, but I'm still bitter over my Niners loss to the Rams. But I will have to say, so I'm struggling with that one. But, you know, I'm very excited about Nick Scott being in the Super Bowl, of course. I had a great visit to the Poli Center worksite at the Fairfax Library Services site. And, Dr. Braybrand, if you haven't had a chance to see our students at the FCPS worksite and the library services, they're doing some incredibly great work and really helping our librarians get all these books out to schools. Because after, during COVID, when a lot of our books went home, they didn't always come back. And so, we've ordered a lot of new books, and these students are doing a great job helping our librarians get those books ready to deliver. And I just want to put a plug in. As we're looking across our system, there's so many great, so much work that needs to be done that our students in Poli and Davis can do. And that site at the library services site is a great example of that. So, I encourage you all to go see what they're doing and talk to Peter Kelly, the principal at Poli. And it was a very exciting visit. Another shout out to Fairfax High. I saw Newsies this weekend at Fairfax Academy, and it was an amazing performance. If you all missed it, it was like a tour. It was so, so professionally done. It was, my family all went. We had a great time. I'm still singing King of New York in my head. And the only last thing I want to say is there is a project that I've worked on for a couple of years now with Supervisor Lusk around practice traffic stops for people with disabilities. It's a great way, in a safe environment, for people with disabilities and police officers to learn to interact together in these practice traffic stops. And the first pilot of this program was done in one of our drivers' education classes because it is actually a skill that, learning to interact during a traffic stop is a skill that all of our young drivers can do. So, thank you to the Fairfax County Police Department, Supervisor Lusk, FCPS students and staff, and especially Carrie Reynolds and Dr. Presidio for really championing this. I'm really, really excited about this with our Drivers Ed program. So, I just had to share that. And I will reluctantly say, go Rams. And I will leave it at that. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone. It is quite late, so I'm going to leave you all with some serious anticipation to read about all the wonderful things I've done. You're going to have to go to my newsletter this month. And I'll instead say congratulations to the Westfield Wrestling Team tonight, who were newly minted Northern Region Champions. And with that, good night, and the meeting's adjourned.